Welcome. We will now hear the public testimony on non-agenda items. Per the Brown Act, public testimony on non-agenda items is not a conversation or a dialogue with the Board. If an issue needs further attention, the Board may refer the matter to the Superintendent for Review and/or Investigation. Testimony on non-agenda items is limited to a maximum of three to fifteen minutes per topic. Public testimony speakers are limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker and depending upon the total number of speakers' requests received, we may be reduced to two or one minute. We have six requests, it will be three minutes each. Non-agenda public testimony is for only those topics, not on today's agenda. If your topic is not on the agenda, you'll be called to speak when you get to that matter and the item. If your topic is on the agenda. Each non-agenda speaker will have three minutes to address the Board, and please remember, no deferral of time is allowed. The Board asks that speakers focus their comments on the issues and not on individuals. When you begin speaking, the green light will come on, a yellow light when you have one minute left, and when your time is up, the red light will appear and a bell will ring. Please finish your sentence when your time is up. I want to call the names of those who signed up in advance first and then any speaker slips submitted this afternoon. If I call your name, please come down to the platform and be ready to speak in the order in which you are called. So our first speakers, Francine Maxwell, Citizen, Carissa Bascos, Chelsea Wilber, Sarah Schultz, and then Patty Roa. So please come forward, and Francine, you're on.
Francine Maxwell, our lives begin to end the day we become silent about things that matter. Our children are in a crisis. We have a $62 million deficit for the school year 15-16. And I'm looking at the job board, and there's all these jobs. Director, Executive Director of this, Program Manager for Gate. All of these things that take at least $100,000 to $35,000 when we could have some psychologists on campus. Our children need full-time nurses on every campus. We need full-time psychologists on every campus. And put the money where the students are on the campus and not here on Normal Street. I'm just completely confused. I saw a job posting for a Director of Reconnection. I don't know if we're making up titles or we're trying to feed other people's families, but the children need help. We need services at the ground level. Normal Street, I think, is almost full to capacity. I looked at the new org chart, and I don't see any diversity. We are the second-largest school district, and on the Superintendent's Leadership Cabinet, I don't see any diversity. So we're gonna preach a whole bunch of things, but we're not gonna walk the walk because we're doing a lot of talking. I recently learned that, of course, every school year comes with changes. I think that moving forward, I think we're moving in the right direction, trying to get transparency, trying to have openness. The Superintendent, the Board Trustee showed that today with openness and transparency and sharing their thought processes of things that they plan to do to move forward. So I think that we have some foundation that we can build on, but the dialogue needs to happen and occur about money. You have a $62 million deficit for our school year, ending in 2016, and I am dismayed at all of these job creations for nothing. The children should come first, the children should be at the forefront. We could use a lot of that money. I know several principals that would love to have a VP. Principals need help. They cannot run some of these schools by themselves. And if we're going to be a district that's about our children's business, let's make sure that the money is not directed here at Normal Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Francine. Citizen, followed by Carissa.
So Muddlin Martin's multimillion-dollar PR machine isn't working. Martin has three protests tonight. It's a record. This auditorium is packed with people unhappy with this arrogant entity. The district has become a real estate mogul and lost sight of its public mission to educate. It's a land shark. It's a land shark chomping and ripping our neighborhoods up, condemning people's land, stealing Balboa Park even though there's a court settlement that says you have to get out. You're forgetting that the taxpayers paid for this land. You're forgetting that the land belongs to us, but you don't care who you hurt, you just keep going. I think that the reason is that you guys keep suffering deficits and you can use the public education lands to generate revenue. And that's why so many people are unhappy. It's Claremont, it's Scripps Ranch, it's Point Loma, it's Normal Heights. Everywhere we look, people unhappy with arrogant school board. We should all be very afraid when a government entity thinks it is above the law.
Carissa, followed by Chelsea.
Hello, I'm a teacher at Joiner Microsociety, and we are requesting your help in the rebuilding of the Joiner community by removing Principal Tim Swanico. It is only with new administration that we can rebuild and unify parents and teachers under a shared vision for student achievement and success. At Joiner, the belief amongst the staff is that our students are more than just a test score. Our instructional practices as well as our programs, including our school-wide literacy curriculum and our microsociety program, have been rooted in the belief that critical thinking and problem-solving are non-negotiables in the daily education of our students. And although we are working just as hard as anyone else to increase our students' achievement on state tests, we have never accepted that test prep should come at the cost of this higher-order thinking that students deserve. We need an administrator who believes that all students are deserving of a rigorous and well-rounded curriculum. In addition, as a constructivist school, we believe that meaning is socially constructed and that each individual plays an integral part in the learning process. This idea has been nested at all levels of learning: in the classroom, during teachers' grade-level planning, and in the decision-making committees that were in place. Every person was valuable, all perspectives were heard, all learning was socially constructed, and all decisions were made together. We have been extremely proud of both our rigorous instruction and of the effective structures that have been in place in our school. The result of this environment of cooperation and innovation can be seen in our excellent neighborhood retention rate. We at Joiner are proud to have more parents in our community area opting to send their kids to our school instead of going to other clusters or charter schools. According to district data, 72.3% of our neighborhood kids attend our school compared to an average of 55.3% for the greater Hoover Cluster. We also have the second-lowest charter attendance rate in any south-of-eight school. Tragically, what has taken years to build and refine has been all but destroyed under this current leadership. We need an administrator who holds our same values and vision for student learning and success and is therefore able to appreciate and support the incredible work that has been happening at our school site. We look forward to working with our community, our teachers, our parents, and unifying under a common vision for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea, followed by Sarah.
Hello. My name is Carissa Bascos, and I'm a parent at Joiner. My children deserve to be in a school where parents and teachers can work together. Parents have a voice, teachers have a voice, and leadership brings perspectives together. This is what Joiner needs. Unfortunately, this is not what has been occurring at our school. The atmosphere at parent events and meetings has led some parents to believe that teachers are the only reason for low reading and test scores. Communities were not brought together by current administration. Instead, a further divide has been created between our passionate teachers, concerned parents, and community members. I have two children who currently attend Joiner. They both have excelled because of the programs that are offered at the school and because of the dedicated Joiner teachers. My eldest child has been a Joiner since she was in kindergarten. I have been so impressed by her ability to critically think and problem-solve across content area and in our everyday lives. The level of academic rigor she has been exposed to directly contributes to her achievement in class and on standardized tests. She will be promoted to the sixth grade and is leaving Joiner, but I struggled with where to put my first grader next year because the current administration does not share the same vision and values as teachers and parents and has a different idea of what shared decision-making entails. Although I firmly believe in the work at Joiner, it can only work and improve with an administrator who supports its strengths, contributes, and creates opportunities for parents and teachers to work collaboratively, to make improvements, rather than just pointing out that improvements need to be made. This division in the community has grown to a hostile level, and this is not an environment I willingly choose to have my child in. We need an administrator that will help unify and rebuild our school and community. I've missed the opportunity to choice my child to another school, so I've chosen to have her attend my neighborhood school in another district because I do not trust Timothy Swanico. One day, I hope we restore the greatness that Joiner once had and will consider returning my child back to Joiner, but not while Tim Swanico is the principal of this school. Thank you.
Thank you. Your final speaker?
Hello, my name is Sarah Schultz, and I'm a proud teacher from Joiner Microsociety Elementary. On behalf of the majority of our teachers, we thank you Board members for the opportunity to voice our concerns. We respectfully request the immediate removal of Principal Tim Swanico for the following reasons. Tim Swanico has created divisions amongst the stakeholders of our school: teachers versus teachers, parents versus teachers, teachers versus district leadership, and now parents versus parents. Teachers have attempted on numerous occasions throughout the school year to address these divisions, and we have seen no progress towards a more collaborative and positive unification. For example, Family Friday should be a place where families are connected with teachers. It should be the bridge that brings the community together. Instead, it has been used as a podium for administration to unleash their agenda of dismantling programs at Joiner Microsociety Elementary without the proper governing bodies that help to make those decisions. As a result, many of our families have shared their hesitancy of attending school events. The school has been led to believe that even the district supports the need to make such drastic changes in our school. He has made comments that he was appointed at the school to clean up the mess that previous principal had left. He's also said that if he didn't implement his top-down changes to our school and its programs, our area superintendent would write him up. The morale at Joiner is at a dangerously low level and at a place that we, as a community, have never experienced. A school climate survey completed in December demonstrated that only a single staff member reported that staff morale at Joiner was positive. After trying to tackle this problem at the lowest levels possible, we reached out for help from others within the district. We have brought this matter and the need for change in leadership to the attention of Board Member Richard Barrera. He was clear he does not have the power to make such a change and that that is why we feel compelled to come to the full Board to request an immediate change in leadership. We have brought with us today a petition signed by over two-thirds of our teaching staff at Joiner Microsociety Elementary, requesting a new principal for our school. We are ready to begin focusing on rebuilding with the support of a new administrator and our passionate parents and community members. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have one, Patty Roa. Unless that was also about Connors, who already spoke. That's it. This completes the non-agenda public testimony for this portion of the meeting. If we do not get to you in the first thirty minutes, we will also hear non-agenda public testimony at the end of the meeting. Thank you all for your comments and for taking time to address the Board and the Superintendent today. We appreciate your input, and please know that your perspectives help us to better serve students, parents, and the community. Again, per the Brown Act, public testimony on non-agenda items is not a conversation or dialogue with the Board. If an issue needs further attention, the Board may refer the matter to the Superintendent for Review and/or Investigation. I'd like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the July 12, 2016 Regular Board Meeting to Order with all Board members present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you wish to address the Board today on any of the items before the Board, your name is and your name is not on the speakers list, printed on the blue paper located at both entrances to the auditorium, you have and you have not already submitted a request for public testimony form, please complete that now and give it to Cheryl Ward. Speakers on agenda items will be called on to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Once the discussion begins on an item, no additional public speaker requests will be accepted by the Board. Board Bylaws 1025 provides that public testimony on agenda items is limited to a maximum of twenty minutes per consent and/or action item, allowing for a maximum of ten minutes per opposing viewpoint. Tonight on Agenda Item H1, we have a number of speakers, more than the normal number than we get, and as the last time we discussed this item, each speaker would have one minute each on the opposing side, and we have one speaker for the favor side would get the full three minutes. Public testimony speakers unlimited to a maximum of the three minutes per speaker, depending upon the total number of speakers, and I said the one minute each. That'll give everybody an opportunity to present their position and point of view and Board direction.
Point of clarification, President McQuarrie. Don't Board Bylaws say that if there is an inordinate number of speakers that Board Bylaws limit speaking to ten minutes for each side, and you're making an exception in this rule? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted for clarification purposes. Thank you.
The Board rules are clear, that there would be twenty minutes for an item with ten minutes for each side, and given the concern on this item, I am making a recommendation, and if we have Board consent, we will provide one minute for each speaker on the opposing side. So we'll now hear, is there any? Non-agenda item testimony was heard earlier, and we will now, and will be heard at the end of the meeting. We'll now hear Item B3, the student presentation from Chavez Elementary School and the Rainforest Art Project. Had a pleasure being there today with Vice President Barrera. And Barrera, do you want to introduce the item?
Yeah, this is an exciting item, and we'll just ask Principal Francisco Santos and our fourth-grade teachers, Olivia Flores and Nasa Romero, and our students from Chavez to come and present this item to us.
Yeah, this is an incredible mosaic that was put together with staff, professional artists, students, teachers, members of the Board, and influential members in the community. It is a masterpiece.
It is. Look at that.
Kind of a metaphor. Kind of the beauty of a mosaic is that all the tiles are of an individual nature. And each person coming together and adding their single piece is sort of a metaphor for what our effort in this district is to have all stakeholders participating in a solution, and everyone coming together, doing their part, we can put together a beautiful piece of work.
Good afternoon, School Board and guests. My name is Nasa Romero, a proud fourth-grade teacher at Caesar Chavez Elementary. We are gathered here today to thank you and the Rainforest Art Project for giving our students an opportunity to take part in developing their own artistic vision for our community. When our students have a greater understanding and appreciation of nature, their minds and hearts open, and they gain a greater sense of self and empathy for others. The tiles that our students created now become part of a permanent art mosaic, which will be located in a highly visible area in our school. This will develop a sense of pride and ownership of their community. With this process, the students contribute to something beautiful and enduring that they could be proud of for the rest of their lives. Years later, they could come back and see their work still there, bringing joy and inspiring others.
Hello, my name is Olivia Flores, and I am a fourth-grade teacher at Caesar Chavez Elementary, and I would like to introduce our students, who are here to speak on behalf of the fourth-grade class at our school. Here to support our speakers are Leonel Javier Ruiz, Marta Rico, Andrea Guzman, Gabby Navarez, Mia Villa, and Jordette Amador. First, I would like to introduce Speaker Sara Lynn Sosa.
Hello, my name is Sara Lynn Sosa, and I am in fourth grade. I am here to present my essay on Caesar Chavez Elementary and the Rainforest Art Project. Did you know that Caesar Chavez was a vegetarian? I bet you didn't know that an American US Navy cargo ship was named after Caesar Chavez. Furthermore, he had thirty-one grandkids. Caesar Chavez didn't have the right conditions as a migrant farmworker. For example, they didn't have good electricity or good plumbing. So Chavez worked to better the migrant farmworkers' rights. His union boycotted against all table grapes. He protested, marched, and boycotted for us. If we didn't, we'd most likely be somewhere else, and our school, Caesar Chavez Elementary, wouldn't be named after him. He cared about not only his family, he cared about everyone. He wanted the best for us, is how I see it. He died knowing he made an impact in the world on April 23, 1993, near Yuma, Arizona, very close to where he was born, on a small family farm in the Gila River Valley. He said, "It was never about the grapes or the lettuce, it was always about the people." The Rainforest Art Project had such a big impact on the fourth graders at Caesar Chavez Elementary. They taught us so much, like how to believe in ourselves. They taught us to show pride and to be proud in our school colors and art. Furthermore, the Rainforest Art Project showed us to be creative and to have fun. We were able to create a mosaic of Caesar Chavez. It was bright and colorful. They brought us brown and glass that looked like beautiful jewels. When we first saw it, we knew it was gonna be a masterpiece. We planned it from the start, then piece by piece, we put it all together like a perfect puzzle. We knew we put our hearts into this mosaic of this noble man, Caesar Chavez, and the values we live by. To conclude, I want to sincerely thank the district, the school board, and the Rainforest Art Project for giving us this wonderful experience to learn about Caesar Chavez through art.
Thank you, Sara Lynn, for such an eloquent speech. Now I'd like to introduce Solomon Ray, who will conclude our speeches.
Hello, my name is Solomon Ray, and I am a fourth grader at Caesar Chavez Elementary. And I am here to present my essay on Caesar Chavez Elementary and the Rainforest Art Project. Viva Chavez. Our school is named after Caesar Chavez, who was a farmworker who wanted to stop the unfair treatment of farmworkers. Caesar Chavez did not use violence. He thought it wasn't fair how farmworkers were not being treated right, were not paid enough, given breaks or water on hot days. So he got mad about what those growers were doing, and he went on a strike. The reason. The reason Caesar Chavez went on a strike was because farmworkers weren't being treated right, so he did not eat. This made him weak. Then he stopped because the sheriffs got in their way. One of them grabbed some posters and ripped them, but it did not stop Caesar. He kept on marching. He did it. Caesar Chavez marched all the way from Delano to Sacramento. He did this to show what was going on in California to the nation. So people from all over the nation came to help Caesar Chavez and the farmworkers get their rights and freedom. Like, the hero. Caesar Chavez and the farmworkers were saved from the sheriffs and the growers. Now they get treated better, such as more money and some working rights, like breaks and shade when it's hot. The inspiration was the help of the Rainforest Art Project. Caesar Chavez has taught us to be a good person by not using violence to hurt each other. Caesar Chavez has saved thousands of farmworkers by going on hunger strikes. He showed us through nonviolence that people can gain their rights like freedom and respect. The Rainforest Art Project taught the fourth graders at Caesar Chavez Elementary how to make beautiful art by teaching us different art techniques. We made collages, cutouts, watercolors, and a mosaic, to name a few. We were so lucky to be able to create a mosaic of our leader Caesar Chavez. It will hang outside our school for all those to see. On behalf of the fourth graders at Caesar Chavez Elementary, I would like to give thanks to all those people who gave us this great opportunity to learn about art and construct the handsome mosaic of our leader Caesar Chavez. If he was still alive, he would be very proud of the artwork, especially his beautiful teeth. The mosaic will protect us and remind all of us to sacrifice Caesar Chavez did while alive. Caesar will live on in our community. Caesar will guard us just like he did with the farmworkers. He died on April 23, 1993. When he went to sleep, he never woke up because he's fasted several times. His example of fair and equal treatment of all people and use of nonviolence are but a few lessons learned from Caesar Chavez. If he was still alive, he would tell us, "This is our great monument." Also, he would say, "This is a wonderful school for kids in grades preschool through fifth." Si se puede, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Solomon, for sharing the spirit of our school. Now I'd like to introduce Mia Villa, who's gonna invigorate this meeting to continue. Thank you, Steve, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. Thank you, kids. Very well done.
You got any help?
That's the hard work.
Do you want to make any concluding remarks?
Item C, adopting the agenda. I'd like a motion to adopt today's agenda with section I, superintendent's consent agenda to be considered following the adoption of the agenda and acted on next.
So moved. Second?
Excuse me, President McQuarrie.
Yes.
We have speaker on items I-1 and I-27. If you could remove those from today's consent.
So I-1 and I-27, you amend your motion to include I-1 and I-27?
I'll, I'll make the motion. I move that we adopt the agenda, moving the superintendent's consent agenda to the front with the exception of items I-1 and 27, which we would consider at the end of the meeting as the last item on the agenda.
Any discussion? Or is there a second?
That's already a second?
Any discussion? All in favor? Pass your buttons. Votes have been cast and it is unanimous.
I'd like to move item I now, the superintendent's consent agenda, without, with the exception of item I-1 and 27.
It's been moved and seconded. Any conversation, any discussion, any questions? Hearing none, cast your vote.
Thank you. Sorry.
And votes are coming in slowly.
Number 10, it's 5-0.
All right.
Is that majority?
I'm sorry. It was 5-0 in the next.
Oh, that, got it. Okay, so the vote has been cast and it was 5-0, it's unanimous. Any reportable actions, report from closed session?
There are none.
Ms. Donovan? Okay. Superintendent Martin, are there any administrative assignments to report out?
Yes, thank you, thank you, President McQuarrie. Management appointments, Vice Principal at Golden Hill K-8, Steve Ellenzondo; Vice Principal at Deportola Middle School, Michelleene Wagner; Vice Principal at Mira Mesa High School, Sharon Rubalcava; Vice Principal at Scripps Ranch High, Rodolfo Para; Principal at Audubon K-8, Maria Pimienta; Principal at Rolando Park Elementary, Anthony DeLuca; Principal, Principal at Rowan Elementary, Jennifer Carpenter; Principal at I-High Virtual Academy, Vicky Conway; Principal at Riley, Thomas Bevel Aqua; Principal at Twain High, Mike Rude; Principal on Special Assignments Supporting Placement and Appeals, John Ross; and Director of Reconnection, Mia Funk.
Each board member will now have the opportunity to speak and share information if they wish. Oh, superintendent report, thanks. I did that the last time.
I know you did. I let you get away with it.
Yeah, not this, not this time.
Not this time, not two times in a row. Thank you, Mr. President. As we all know, as a community, as a nation, this has been a very difficult week for our nation and for many communities that make up the San Diego Unified Family. It's important that we tonight and in our private time and in public meetings recognize the pain that's caused in the African-American community by the shooting deaths of young black men in Baton Rouge and Minneapolis last week. We stand together as a community against racism and equally, we stand together against the hate that we saw in Dallas last week. The deaths of five police officers reminds us all of the difficult job our police officers do. They put their lives on the line for us every day at our schools and on our streets. We appreciate and honor their commitment and their sacrifices. Our public schools, we know, are frequently called on to solve problems that we didn't create and it's our obligation to be beacons of hope and light, especially during difficult times. I want to say that I'm proud of all of our San Diego Unified Schools and the job that we do to make the world just a little bit better for our citizens and for our community. I want to thank our board for passing a budget and an LCAP that had a serious emphasis on restorative practices and the work that we have to do going forward as a school community is incredibly important, not just for today, but for our future. Recently, this, we also talked about a community effort because we know that we have students in the summertime, as some of our schools are out while some are still in session, that we are able to provide access to food. We're helping to feed our families over the summer in a program that we announced last week. We kicked off the summer lunch program with our traditional annual barbecue. We know that a lot of students, when they're out of school for the summer, don't have food or access to food and that hunger does not take a vacation. That's why we provide healthy meals to students 18 years or younger for free. It's our Summer Fun Cafe program. It's a free lunch program and we serve 250,000 meals and snacks during the summer and it requires no paperwork to participate. Meals are served through August, 19th, at 61 sites, 28 park and rec centers, 16 community and military sites, and 17 schools. I'm very proud of this program and the collaboration we have with the city at many of the parks and recs areas to serve this food. Another way that our schools work together to improve our world is by bringing people joy and that's especially important during difficult times. I'm proud of our LGBT, LGBTQIA team, Sophia and Mick, who's helped to put together our efforts around the Pride Parade and Pride activities in San Diego with this coming weekend. Our team is making sure that we are well represented in the Pride Parade this year and giving the, given the shootings in Orlando, it's more important than ever that we stand together as one community. Our students will be wearing capes, a kind of a nod to Comic-Con that's coming up, but it's also a tribute to their determination to be superheroes. Superheroes who protect one another and especially LGBTQIA students. We are decorating capes at the Ed Center on Thursday morning and the students are hand making these capes, starting at 5:30 AM through 10 AM. Please come to help us with that if you'd like. And then please march with us on Saturday, July 16th. We are contingent number eight. Oh, we moved up. How did we get that? We're contingent number eight in the parade, so there's only seven groups ahead of us. Line up at 10 AM and the kickoff of the parade is at 11 AM and we'll be meeting at the Hillcrest Post Office at the corner of Harvey Milk Street and Cleveland Avenue. If you'd like more details about this, you can contact Mick Raben, m-raben@sandy.net. And then finally, I want to praise all of our students and our teachers who bring arts to our schools. This month, July, is our month of murals and you got to see one today because we have four new murals that are appearing on our campuses, thanks to our partnership with the Rainforest Art Project. I invite everyone to check out the amazing works of art. Chavez Elementary, who is here tonight, Normal Heights Elementary, who unveiled their mural yesterday, Perkins Elementary, who will unveil another mural next Monday, and Hamilton Elementary unveiling their mural on July 20th. I'm reminded of a quote by Pablo Picasso, "That art washed out the dirt of everyday life off of our souls." In this difficult week, we are especially grateful for the contributions of our young artists and we're grateful for the joy that they bring to our everyday lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Now each board member will have the opportunity to speak and share information.
I always get to start.
You do.
This is the one time you let the females go first.
I see. Oh, we'll have to do more office.
Thank you. I would like to say that I had the opportunity to visit some activities and events outside of District E now that school is out for the traditional school year. And I was really struck by the contrast that I heard from some of the parents in, in other areas in comparison to what I'm hearing in my community. I was at the Scripps Parade and saw you on the float and had the opportunity to just stand and chat with one of your parents. I think Dingman is where he has students. And he indicated that he moved into that community because he wanted his children to go to that school. And I visited Madison, Claremont areas and so forth and it just really, it bothers me that we don't have the same kind of, people are not moving into our community to attend our schools. In fact, you have the contrast. I have neighbors who are, are moving their kids out to private schools, to schools elsewhere and that's really troubling because I know that we have a lot of work to do. And it ties in kind of with what Cindy was saying about, what the superintendent said earlier about what's been happening in the community and so forth. And I really think that we have to do a little bit more to find out ways that we can address these concerns and move forward to the next step. Because the contrast was just so, so blatant to hear parents saying, "I wanted my child in this school and I moved into this community," versus parents saying that the school is doing what it needs to do and we need to do more, whether it's a perception or the reality of test data and everything else. I think that we've got to accelerate what we're doing to try to address those concerns of parents and children in District E. I also visited a couple of graduate, reclassification graduations at Zamorano. Mike and I both were there. And at Central School, I visited them last week. And I went to Choyas's Deep Activity and saw their earth lab program. But bottom line for me is that I want us to keep that focus in mind, that we've got to do something to accelerate what's going on and I think later we'll hear some more comments that I have to make about one of the charters. Thank you.
Trustee Evans?
Thank you. After the events this, excuse me, after events this week and then watching the kids that were here today, I was reminded of a lot of the, this, they were from Cesar Chavez Elementary, but we have Cesar Chavez service clubs across the district and these kids are really learning how to be good and productive citizens. And I was recalling that a couple of years ago or so, we had some dialogues here between community members, it was when the whole Trayvon Martin shooting happened. And I think it would be, I would hope that we could do something like that again, maybe a conversation between San Diego Unified Police, San Diego Unified Police Officers, and our students about how we can have enhanced relationships between the community and, and our police officers so both sides can really participate and dialogue. I know we did that a couple of years ago, it was really helpful. And this is in contrast to all of the incivility and polarization that we hear on, on the national level in so many, in so many different instances. So I just hope we would take that into consideration. And last week was, or yes, it was last week, was the 4th of July and the people in Mira Mesa were very happy that they had their fireworks and at the end it was announced that the Scripps-Mira Mesa fireworks will continue on into the future by the cooperation and the change of policy that this, this board adopted. So thank you for that.
Thank you, John Evans, for your leadership on the firework situation with Mira Mesa. Thank you, sir.
Trustee Visor, any report?
Oh, I thought we go this way.
Oh, yes, exactly. Thank you.
Appreciate Dr. Evans' suggestion and I just think with everything that happens every day in our, in our school communities, I just think it's important that we take a moment and honor the work of our school police force, the work that our school police educators do every day to make life better for our students and I just think you deserve a round of applause.
The last couple of weeks since we last reported out, there's been a lot of things going on. First of all, on June 30th, I attended the MAPPA luncheon, that's the Mexican-American Business and Professional Association Luncheon, where I reported out to that really well-attended group. Our efforts to improve education so that we have a quality school in every neighborhood. Also shared some of our progress we've made to helping Latino students to succeed at higher levels and especially our projected graduation rate of 92%, which is phenomenal, phenomenal, especially since now our graduate, high school graduation requirements are, are A through G. College coursework is required to get a high school diploma now in San Diego Unified. And there was a lot of people that were concerned about that and I'm really thrilled that Superintendent Cindy Martin and the team, Ms. Hiblin, and every teacher and educator, all the counselors, the parents, the students stepped up to that raised expectation and achieved at higher levels than we've seen before. Then on Saturday, July 2nd, I attended the CARE Annual Ramadan Dinner Breaking of the Fast, where we also received a report on Islamophobia in our schools and the many, many students that are bullied just because of their religion in our schools. And hopefully, we'll be able to continue to make sure that San Diego Unified is safe for all children. Then, as trustee Whitehurst Payne had mentioned, I, on the 4th of July, I attended the annual Scripps Ranch 4th of July Community Parade. I love that community event. It's a great opportunity to visit with lots and lots of parents. Several schools were also in there, from EBS Scripps Elementary and Dingman and lots of other schools. The Scripps Ranch High School Marching Band and the flag and a lot of other folks in the community were there. Then right after the Scripps Ranch 4th of July Parade, I went and participated in the Mira Mesa 4th of July Parade as well, where they now have the fireworks. And again, I want to thank trustee John Evans for his leadership. Once, he heard that there was a concern that the fireworks in Mira Mesa were going to be canceled this year, he immediately took action to try to find out what are some solutions to that and now the fireworks will continue, hopefully, for at least 33 more years. So thank you, Mr. Evans, Dr. Evans, for that work. Then on July 6th in the morning, I attended Eid Al Fiter, which is the celebration for the end of Ramadan and it was at Qualcomm Stadium because there were about 15,000 people there. Many, many students and parents in our schools. In fact, there was this one family with, with a couple of boys that attend the local elementary school just down the street from where I live in Sarah Mesa and it was really great to see the community come together again. So those are some of the things, there's obviously a lot more, but I think those are some very important events out in the community, visiting with parents and our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Likewise, I, I made a number of visitations, attended a number of meetings and, and events. I was at Zamorano Elementary School with trustee Dr. Whitehurst Payne for a very special celebration of students who are being reclassified from beginning English speakers to proficient. And this is a K-5 school, 1,025 students. So parents love the school and it's a feeder school and a Morris and it was an incredible experience to see these students mastering English skills and being recognized for their accomplishment. Earlier, we went to their, their evening fair where the students and parents attended to see the work, the artwork and the crafts that they are creating there at Zamorano Elementary. Then we went to the, went to the kickoff for the barbecue at Skyline with superintendent Martin and trustee, again, Dr. Trustee Whitehurst Payne and we served hot dogs and hamburgers and beans with Chief Shelley Zimmerman and other civic leaders to students who are going to have lunch during the summer. So when school is out, kids will not go hungry. And our cafeteria department with Gary Patel will provide, as I understand, 150, close to 300,000 lunches this summer for students around the city. So we're very, very pleased to be able to do that and very pleased, happy to participate in that, that effort. I had a meeting with a small group at the La Jolla Golden Triangle Club in the La Jolla area. They're looking for schools that would like to partner with schools in Afghanistan. So they have a number of schools, boys-only schools, girls-only schools, and co-ed schools and they're looking for high schools and middle schools here who might be interested in sharing communication, writing letters and videos and, and working together with, together with us. And so it's a great opportunity for, for us to connect with schools around the world to, to develop our civics learning and our global acuity. I also attended the Orlando Remembrance Press Conference and the Surface that was held at St. Paul's Cathedral, again, with trustee, Dr. Whitehurst Payne and a number of other people. It was a great event, well-turned, well-turned out, delivering the message that we do care, we do, are united. It was a great event, well-turned-out, delivering the message that we do care, we are united, we are concerned about the hate, and we need to come together around peace and reconciliation and for unity. Nonviolence is not the answer. We need, we need love and compassion. Then, related to that, I went to, I was at the opening, the ribbon cutting at the CARE Center opening in National City. The CARE Center is a product of community collaboration aimed at preventing crime and supporting the success of individuals living in southeast San Diego. So this, by connecting the community-based organizations, the San Diego County District Attorney's Office, the Bonnie Domenis was there, and so was Supervisor Gray Cox, and many other community partners along with San Diego Unified School District. The CARE Center, which stands for Community Action Resource Engagement, will provide adults and youth with a greater network of resources to help them build and reach their goals. So it's an incredible program that they're, it's a great program they've started. It's at 12 North Euclid in National City, servicing our students in the Lincoln and the Morse High School cluster area. Then we had the press conference today with the unveiling of the Chavez mural and dedicating July as the month of murals. And I was there with Trustee Vice President Richard Barrera, and we had a great display of the work here today. So a very, very, very busy week. And those are our reports. Yes? Okay?
Regarding the board reports, I would recommend that each board member submit a written report and post it up there. And that way, all the ribbon cuttings and the glad-handing and the lecturing, it would be there if people were interested in reading it, and then the meeting could move along a little bit faster. I think it would just be great if you could do that.
Thank you for your suggestion. Okay, moving on to Item E. There is nothing there. Item F?
I'll move Item F.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Cast your vote. Item G1. We'll now hear Item G1, the Career Technology Education Advisory Committee Annual Update to the Board. Please welcome Terry McKerny and CTAC Business Chair. Who is the CTAC Business Chair?
Close.
Did I get that right?
Just to keep me under control.
Thank you, Terry.
President McCrory, members of the board, Superintendent Martin, again, my name is Terry McKerny. I am a small businessman in the defense sector here in San Diego, and I'm pleased, privileged to be back with you again, to talk to you, talk about our CTEC, our Career Technical Education Committee, for another year. Also like to acknowledge the presence of Mr. Love, our director, and Mr. Hartley, who's our assistant director. We also have several members of the CTEC distributed through the audience here. I also want to welcome my wife Gloria, who is a principal in another district to the south of here. I don't know if she's spying on me or just wants to make sure she knows where I am tonight, but in any event. This is the composition of our Career Technical Education Advisory Committee. I want to stress that we are, we are not a group of educators, although in response to the Perkins Audit, we have added a couple of extra positions on it, including a student and a principal and so forth. But we are a community organization with a single goal in mind, and that is, we want to see that the graduates of San Diego Unified are prepared to go on to the workforce with the skills they need, not only the technical skills they need to enter the workforce, but also those other skills, those soft skills that they need, the ability to work with people, the ability to communicate and so forth. And in accordance with that, that's what our primary mission is. I'd also point out that in addition to the CTEC, we meet quarterly, there are also four each of the sectors that we're going to look at real quickly here. There are classroom-level advisory committees that are made up of people in particular disciplines relating to that particular career track. And they provide very specific onsite, almost, advice about the technical aspects of a particular career. Quick overview of what we do. As you can see, we are there to provide recommendations and act as a liaison between the district and the business community. And we feel that's a particularly important, important mission. There are several ways that's reflected that we'll touch on. Do want to call your attention to the picture there. TV entertainer Nick Cannon and his foundation, along with JP Morgan Chase, sponsored a teen mogul contest at the showcase, the CCTE Showcase, a couple of months ago. I don't know if, how many of you made it to the showcase? Showcase is a terrific event every year where our CCTE programs get to show off. This teen mogul competition was in addition to that. Some real money passed out, the young man from UC High who won. Won it for producing not only a technology that could be developed, but also a business plan for how that technology would be manufactured and brought to market. So that's kind of that whole integral approach to building products, bringing them to the marketplace, that whole business development area that we've tried to emphasize, particularly as I stood here last year and said, one of the things we wanted to do a little bit better was our business and finance education. Some of the things we've done this year, particularly want to emphasize those first two. We are actively engaged in looking at the kind of projects that Mr. Love is trying to accomplish and his goals for the CTEC program. And so we look at the grants, we look at the MOUs and the agreements that he makes with different segments of the business population. And we look at their facilities plans, particularly to make sure that the programs that we're doing in the district really meet those requirements that we, as members of the business community, see are important relative to educating, again, our kids to be able to go into the workforce once they leave school. Some of the other things you can see, kind of talk to our, some of our hands-on things that we do. And one of the most interesting things we do is we hold our meetings at different school sites, so we get an idea of what's going on at the particular site. Let me go off, I'm going to get, going to get kicked by Al for telling this story here. But we visited the Morse, the Morse Automotive Site a couple of months ago. And so we had the kids show us around. So we learned a couple of things. One, it's a terrific site in terms of the technology that's in there to repair cars. But we asked them, "What do you need?" And they took us to the computer lab, "Oh, they need new computers." And that's been programmed. The other thing they said, and this was interesting, this was from one of the kids who was in the pathway, so he's taking that, that particular curriculum all the way through high school, right to the point that he actually earns certification to be able to walk right into a garage and work. And the kid said, "Well, the only thing that we don't like as students here is sometimes the counselors have to put kids into the course that are only here for like one year. And they really aren't committed to it and they detract from our learning." So not to put the counselors on report, not to put those kids on report, but again, take from that the motivation of those regular students that are going through this program and what they're learning in a real state-of-the-art facility out there at the school. These are the industry sectors, these are all the industry sectors that are, that are provided for under California Education Code. I want to point out that the district currently has programs for all of these, with the exception of two, agriculture, and the other is the fashion and interior design. We do not have those two programs. But I think if you look across the district and realize the size of the district, and a primarily urban district, we do a terrific job at being able to provide access to programs for each of these, to the, to the students of this district by having each of these, 13 of the 15 sectors covered. How that breaks down in terms of where our students are distributed, let me tell you a little bit of a good news, good news story from this chart. Remember when I came up here, I think as recently as a year ago, AME, which were the arts and the media, they were over a quarter of the students here. Well, that's gone down. Why is that good news? Well, the good news is because in our engineering, architecture, and in our manufacturing, production, and design, the number of students have gone up. And that was the direction we wanted to drive our student population. So we've had some success with that. Just real quickly, in terms of numbers, in any given year, last year, we had 58% of our high school kids taking a CCTE course. If you look at a typical San Diego Unified student over the course of four years, around 87, 88% of them will take a CCTE course. So we do have penetration, if you will, down into the, into the market of the student, the student body. So we do have kids taking these courses. What we'd like to do is to see more kids take advantage of the pathway programs, where they go through a three or even in some cases, a four-year program that really does prepare them to go into that profession once they leave the, once they leave the district. And again, in the case of some, some of the pathways, we actually have certification. So looking at that with a little bit finer point, these are the three areas that the San Diego Workforce Partnership has identified as most critical or where the job growth is going to be for jobs in San Diego. And you can see what they wind up being, advanced manufacturing, healthcare, information, communications. Think about San Diego, those make a lot of sense. How are we doing relative to those? Well, if you look at, look at the chart here, you'll see that particularly in that, those advanced manufacturing, the left two, which includes our manufacturing and our engineering, you can see the growth in the number of students that are, that are taking those courses. And the same with the health services program. Do see a bit of a dip in the information technology, and that's largely because we had one school that shifted from that particular curriculum over to the, to the engineering curriculum. So good, good news on that. And one of the other good things we see in our engineering program is because we're partnered with Project Lead the Way out at San Diego State, kids that graduate from the engineering program are guaranteed admission to San Diego State in engineering if they, if they complete the program. Couple of quick things about money here. We have two trusts that I'm going to touch on real quickly. The first is the Career Pathways Trust. This is about $2.4 million over the course of three years. It's only covering the sectors you see indicated there, so it's sort of a one-time grant. However, it's something we're taking advantage of, again, to see that shift that we want to relative to advanced manufacturing, communications, and information technology. A maybe more important grant might be our incentives grant. This particular grant's being used to upgrade programs at several schools, and it can be used for facilities. And you can see the work there that went on over at the Claremont Business School. Let me tell you, if you have a chance, go over and visit the Claremont Business School, where we've got a, got the room where you can go in and you can see, read the stock market ticker all day. Terrific program over there. Most importantly, led by a fellow who used to be a stockbroker and is now, like most of the CCTE teachers, now moved over to be an educator. Couple of recommendations we have relative to those, to the classroom modifications. Again, the, those incentive grant funds are particularly important for us, for those. And we got a lot of what Al is characterizing as small projects. For example, we're going to be doing some patch and paint out at Morse. We talked about at Crawford, we're also doing some of that. Mission Bay, we're upgrading the information communications technology program. So there's, there's a variety of things that that particular grant will take care of, and that's going to be a focus. We are particularly interested in trying to continue that alignment that we've begun with local, high-priority industry sectors, and will again, kind of keep moving in that direction. We are particularly interested in strengthening our industry partnerships. And one of, one of Al's particular goals has been that, and one of the actions the CTEC has taken on has been to really emphasize interaction with our industry partners. You can see that in certainly things like the JP Morgan sponsoring the, the competition. But one of the other things we're trying to do is more of the internships, more of the job shadowing, more of getting, getting kids into the workplace to look at how business is really done on a, on a day-to-day level. And that's, that's a particular thing that the CTEC has, has taken on. So just in conclusion, again, I want to stress to you that the place where you really see that this thing works is when you go out and you talk to the kids. And then you see the advantage of the, of the partnerships that we have. Couple of months ago, we had the Iron Chef Competition. Now, when the, when the five teams went out, they went to the Jack-in-the-Box Research Center or whatever they call it out there. So they're using a real high-tech, modern kitchen. The judges of that competition included Chef Bernard of the Marine Room and Deborah Scott of the Cone Group. Now, there are probably adult culinary students in this town that would kill to get in front of, of professionals like that. And they come and help our San Diego Unified hospitality and culinary programs. And that's the kind of engagement that really means something to these kids. Don't know how many of these kids are going to wind up being chefs. But what they've learned in their ability to work together as a team, what they've learned, their ability to have workplace skills is just tremendous and really what we, we need to see in that next generation of workforce. So, subject to your questions, that's my report. Didn't say anything bad, did I? Am I trouble?
Superintendent Martin, do you have comments? Want to respond to the report? Then we go to the board. I don't believe we have any public comment. Okay?
So first of all, thank you, Terry, for your service and for your work with this committee and helping to bring the vision forward. Your recommendations and your work with Al Love allow us to continue to make sure the collaboration is strong and you can bring the business voice into the decisions that we're making. And we really appreciate it. So I want to respond specifically to, to your recommendations. I think they're strong recommendations, if you want to go back to that, to that slide. But specifically, the first recommendation about the collaboration between facilities and planning and what we're doing to make sure our facilities match our programs, I think you mentioned a little bit, but we have 15 projects and we put them in different categories. So we're moving forward with these projects. Smaller projects are, that we can do quickly and can be implemented by PPO in the short term. We have some in that category. The second category is projects where there's some spaces currently where the program is pretty amazing, but the space doesn't actually match the program. And so we've identified a few areas where that's happening, and we can get support and collaboration with FPC to improve those spaces so that they're actually able to attract the kids. And we have these amazing programs and the facilities don't yet match. So we've identified a few of those. And then we've also looked at where we have some rooms that aren't going to be used next year and where they are going to be used, we are going to use rooms, those projects can be done over the summer. So we're working with FPC to determine the scope of the work of these 15 projects in these three categories. And at Camp, at Crawford, the auto program, the ICT program at Mission Bay, the Makerspace Program at Claremont, and the San Diego Engineering Program at San Diego High. Specifically, we can work on the facilities and alignment to make sure that we have the authentic environment that's true to industry. And then your second recommendation about aligning our work to the, to the county, regional, on the high-priority industry sectors, that's something we're committed to. We have full commitment from our principals. They've confirmed their commitment to the career pathway offerings at their sites, and we're going to continue to develop the high-priority, sustainable career pathways that we know are in alignment. So completely agree and are moving forward with that recommendation and have the commitment of our principals. Then your third recommendation to strengthen the industry partnerships that provide the students with the meaningful work-based learning. We definitely will continue that. We've engaged our employers regionally by sector, according to the sectors that we know are high priority. And then we're developing more work-based learning opportunities in partnership with CCPT and the consortium members. So we'll continue to work on industry partners, nonprofit partners, so that we can have stronger bonds, more efficient partnerships, and the career pathways grant helps us do that at a regional level, not just here at San Diego Unified. And then as far as your final recommendation about the virtual work-based learning environments, we're developing two VR projects for next year. One is going to be in the IT sector and the other is in biotech. And we're going to continue to pursue the technology as a means to increase the number of work-based learning opportunities that, of course, going to a workplace is great, but when we can do it virtually, that's also good, and we want to expand that. So we agree with the recommendations and have already put some things in motion to be able to make these things a reality, and we appreciate your feedback.
And let me make two- And let me make two follow-up comments on that. First of all, we need to realize that CCTE programs are very facilities-intensive, infrastructure and facility-intensive. They just tend to be that way. If you think about that, you'll understand why. Secondly, the issue of trying to get our kids out for the educational experience, the workforce education experience, something we've had some motion with, particularly working with Junior Achievement, who has a process for doing that. And that process is very important, because I can tell you, as a small businessman, the hard part is for me to find the extra cycles, or overhead, or whatever, to reach out and do these "extra" things for kids. And the process that we're developing with our Junior Achievement members on the C-TAC is really helping do that with small businesses, which so many in San Diego are, small business community. Thank you.
Any questions or comments for the board? Trustee Barrera?
Yeah, Terry, thank you. And I appreciate the report this year, and I especially appreciate the progress that you highlighted in the percentage of students that are moving into the high-priority areas that the superintendent talked about. We discussed that last year, and to see that movement being made is much appreciated. I know that the 15 industry sectors that are identified by the state, I'm not sure how often the state updates those 15 sectors. And we know that's a little bit bureaucratic, because it's coming from, you know, something that's sort of one-size-fits-all, and we're not sure how often it's updated. But the work that we do here locally, in our own region, working with the Workforce Partnership, and the identification of where the career growth is likely to be, and then tailoring our programs to motivate students to get involved in those sectors is terrific work.
Well, I got to give credit to Al and Dean, and the way they've shaped the program so that we're making those numbers go in the right direction, i.e. getting kids into the right career paths.
I think that's great work, and we appreciate that. A couple of, I also very much appreciate what the superintendent just talked about in terms of analysis of our facilities, and how we make sure. We know that it's a little bit of a tricky process, because we do invest a lot in facilities. And we invest a lot in facilities either with our bond program, or, you know, in the past, the ability to draw down Prop 1D money from the state. And we know, once we build a facility, it's kind of, it's something that's in place. But we also know that the world keeps changing, and that industry keeps changing. So, I think what Superintendent Martin just talked about, about this constant review of our facilities, how do we continue to fit our facilities so that they're, you know, meeting the needs of where the CTE program needs to be going is...
So, we make a big investment there, yeah.
That's absolutely right.
But we want to make it match.
We want to make it match, so appreciate that. And then, a couple of other things. I know that the program and Al has been doing work in partnership with our building trades partners. And that partnership has really been picking up over the last couple of years. And we thank the building trades for their continued effort to work with our students. We know that under our project labor agreement, where we talk about our partnership with the trades, to build, you know, to do the work in our schools that our bond measure is paying for, one of our goals, we've got our community hire goals that are in there, where we identify, our goal is that 35% of the work hours are done by people who live in 10 targeted ZIP codes within our city, which happen to be 10 targeted ZIP codes where a high percentage of our students live. And so, to actually build a pipeline where the folks who eventually are working on improving our schools are actually coming right from our high schools, and into the apprenticeship programs, and into the trades, it's just a terrific partnership, and it's great to see that really starting to take off.
Well, the picture I put back up there is an apprentice career day that was, one of our C-TAC members, who is a union representative, put that on as part of his C-TAC committee work. It was terrific, terrific opportunity.
And the last point that I'd make, and I know it's something that you focus on, but this emphasis on career pathways around public service, and particularly teaching, you know, are areas that, you know, we know overall, we've got, you know, goals that come out of our future teacher pipeline task force. And then, to integrate our CTE programs to connect them to those goals that our education force comes to both mirror the demographics of our student body, and also that we're growing our own, that we're growing our own future educators. But I think that applies certainly to teaching and education, but to public service in general. And I would hope that we see our district as an engine to help identify and develop our future public servants. And I think there's a clear role in our CTE program for that. Thank you.
There certainly are a couple of those sectors. Again, the categorization of the sectors, you point out, is a little brittle. But there are certainly, there's fire programs, there are the childhood early development programs that are serving our students. The fire, you know, the fire program got a new fire truck. It's a refurbished fire truck from, like, what was it from? Escanera?
Del Mar.
Del Mar, Del Mar. And the thing is bright and shiny, and they had the, so one of the arts classes built its own logo for Engine Company Number One. And the truck, as you know, pumps water. And the only thing they did, they did disconnect the drive train, so the kids can't drive the truck around the neighborhood with a siren. But everything else works, so we are doing some of this.
Another question related to that. As far as on this, on the building and construction trades, I'm familiar with different programs in arts, engineering, business, health sciences, and the courses and facilities they have. And I know we're trying to move, as Trustee Barrera said, students into the apprenticeships in the building trades, and you gave the example of the photo up there. But what happened specifically in terms of courses that are offered that lead students towards the apprenticeships in the building trades?
Can you talk about?
Building and construction trades are most, our platinum program right now is at Hoover, and it has a Prop 1D facility. And we have great relationships with all of the building and construction trades. So, they actually come to the site, work with students. One of the big programs is our solar installation. You have the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers that come and work with our students on the weekend and during the week. So, the trades unions, the folks in those trades come and work with our students, and they prepare those that would like to go into the trades for the testing. So, when you look at the carpenters' union, and you look at the electrical workers' union, the sheet metal workers' union, some of them have testing requirements. So, students have to get prepped up, and they play a major role in helping students who choose to go down that path to be able to navigate the admissions requirements for them to get into an apprenticeship program.
So, are they taking specific CTE courses, or are the extra thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It is a course sequence.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
One comment related to that. I understand that if they go through that program, once they get into the community college, with three additional classes, they get their AA, and then they're eligible to move on to get their BA, which means that you can go down that pathway. You don't have to go immediately into college and university. You can go into the trades, and then you may decide you don't want to go on to the university.
And that includes the general aid requirement, yes.
All right. I want to thank Mr. Love and Terry for your guys' work over the last year. Like Trustee Barrera had said, that what we're seeing is much better than last year. And we can see movement in the strong direction to help our students to be better prepared for the high-demand career fields of the future. I especially wanted to, if you could please comment on some of the internship programs, and what that might look like in the future, so that our students at high school can actually be getting some on-hand experience in different career paths or companies in San Diego.
Well, I guess we'll do an Alphonse and Gail Stone here. Again, I want to stress, from my perspective, as someone who'd like to participate, and as a businessman, having this process that, again, we're worked through with Junior Achievement is tremendously helpful from the business perspective, because we want to get these kids into the workforce. And internships is kind of the gold standard for doing that, of course.
Right.
And so, an example of that, I use the term platinum. When I look at the health science pathway, students go through a four-course sequence. It's all A to G, career-ready and college-ready. But in their fourth year, we have a relationship with industry partners like Thornton, Rady's, Sharps, and students go on internships. And that's just a natural part of the course sequence. We want to scale that up. That's not in every industry sector. Terry mentioned earlier that in the engineering sector, it's hard to get in that space. Biotech, sometimes it's hard to get behind those doors. So, when you have students that are ready for internships, we have to make it easier on our industry partners. So, we're exploring virtual reality, where we can take a 360-degree camera into the workspace, follow an employee around, do the job shadowing activity, and then be able to have not just some, but almost all students experience a virtual internship. So, we're trying to get smarter in the way that we approach some of the facilities, and some of the industry sectors that have a harder time taking on 35 kids in a classroom. Some of the larger hospitals, they don't seem to have that problem. So, that's work that we're continuing to gain traction on.
Yeah. Good. Great. Great work. Thank you. And then, one other issue is, you know, we've had, Trustee Evans had talked about the internship programs in the trades, where they can go to an internship program and work for a few years, learn the trade, become a journeyman, and then they're making a livable wage with benefits and things like that. And they're having, instead of college debt, they're having their entire schooling paid for, and they're earning money on top of that. Could you explain a little bit about what we're doing at that? I know that we're doing a little bit more, but could you elaborate on that?
Well, I think you described it perfectly. If I'm a student at Morse High School, I'm a student at Scripture Ranch High School, and I go into, I'm in engineering, and I decide that, wow, I like working with sheet metal, now that I've been exposed to that trade. Well, I have a pretty good example of that. Two students, one that's going to Berkeley, one that's over at the Sheet Metal Workers Union. Four years later, this student is about to make $98,000, and is about to be a journeyman. And his brother is about to...
Without going to college?
That's going to college at the community college level, but going to the training facility every twice a week for four years. So, he shares the story, $98,000, and I have no debt. And he says to his brother, who's an engineering major, civil engineering, you know, "Tell us your story." And he says, "Get out of my face." So, you described the story very well, that this career pathway is, option is both college and career-ready. But if you choose to go down many of the trades, you will find that there is gold at the end of the rainbow. So...
Well, it's a good career option, right?
Obviously, yeah. It's a great, great, great option for students. Thank you for your work.
So, the automotive, to return to that, what's appealing to me, as a business person as well, is the fact that the kid gets a certification. And in fact, from an internship perspective, the afternoon, the kid goes off from his school, and goes to the, down to a local shop, and does his internship right there at the car dealership.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
There are people here, came from work, have their children. You took care of this, no time limit. But there are people here to take care of some serious business about a charter school closing.
Right. Sir, we do have an agenda, and we are moving to those items, and we have to do it in a public way. And we have to do it, but I understand your comment, and thank you. You're out of order. We're moving on. All move item, staff recommendation for item G2.
Second.
And we do have one speaker for G2. Superintendent Martin, you want to give, you want to present the item, and then we will move to the public comment, I mean, the speaker, and then we'll board comment.
Sure. Thank you, President McQuarrie. This is item G2, and it's to grant, the recommendation is to grant the revision of the Audeo, the Charters Audeo School, and the Charter School of San Diego and Laurel Preparatory Academy to reorganize their governance structure. And the amendments are listed in the item. These are in alignment with what we recommended. The charter office and staff had recommended some specific changes that needed to happen in these areas. And you can see that they're outlined in terms of facilities and their governance structure. So, what we're bringing forward today is in complete alignment with what our charter office had recommended the school needs to do, and we're happy to see that they're making this progress tonight. And we recommend approval of what we're bringing forward.
Let's go to public speaker, Tim Tutter. Three minutes.
Good evening, President McQuarrie, Superintendent Martin, members of the board, Tim Tudor, Executive Director for Audeo Charter School and Laurel. I just wanted to acknowledge the work done by Susan Park for collaborating with their school while working through these complex issues. And I'm pleased to resolve these issues to everyone's mutual satisfaction. The most important thing is that these changes do not interrupt the educational support of students. Also, would like to acknowledge Dr. McQuarrie for taking the time back in April to travel to Baltimore, to be there on hand when the Charter School of San Diego received, became the first school of any kind to receive the Malcolm Baldrick National Quality Award from the Office of the President of the United States. So, thank you.
Thank you, Tim. It was a great honor to be there and to be present for that award. I think it's the first time ever that a school and a charter receive this acknowledgement.
I'll just clarify that these amendments that are happening tonight are in alignment with what we recommended. There are more amendments coming forward, but these are the ones that are currently available and ready, and they're making progress, and we appreciate that.
Excellent. Any other comments? If not, we had a motion, we had a second. Cast your vote. It is unanimous. G4. We'll now hear item G4, the initial proposal from California School Employees Association, Office Technical and Business Service Bargaining Unit, and successor agreement. Superintendent Martin, please present the item.
This is a, this is a public hearing to solicit public comment, so open.
Open.
And this is where we are receiving the initial proposals from CSEA OTBS Bargaining Unit for their successor agreement. As you know, their agreement expires on June 30th, and we will be opening an agreement open to negotiations on all subjects.
Do we have any public speakers? No public speakers? Closed. Any other questions, comments from the board? Moving on. G5. We'll now hear item G5, the District Initial Proposal for California School Employees Association Office Technical and Business Service to Bargain Successor Agreement. I'd like a motion on item G5.
I'll move item G5. Second.
Motion and a second. Superintendent Martin, please present the item.
And this one goes, that was their initial proposal. This is another public hearing.
Open.
This is a public hearing to approve the district's initial proposal for CSEA OTBS to bargain the successor agreement in accordance with Section 3547 of California Government Code and our Bylaws 1031. Parties have an initial bargaining meeting scheduled coming up on July 28th to discuss the dates and to begin bargaining with OTBS. So, it's their sunshine and our response to that, to be able to begin the negotiations.
Do we have any speakers? Public hearing closed. Any comments, questions from the board? If not, we had a motion and a second. Cast your vote. Moving on. H.
I'll move staff recommendation on item H1. Second.
We had a motion and a second. We'll have, Honored Donovan, do you have, introduce the item, and then we'll have public comment.
Thank you, Board President, Trustee McQuarrie. This item is second approval of the whole-site modernization project for Point Loma High School. You will recall that at the last consideration, the board approved the environmental report, adopted the environmental impact report for the project. At that time, the board also took action to approve the project. However, the line item on the agenda did not specifically reference project approval. And in order to assure that we are in compliance with our obligations under the Brown Act, we are asking the board to retake that vote.
Thank you. So, we have public comment. We have one speaker in favor. We'll start with that person. We have 39 speakers against. Board policy, as stated earlier, was 10 minutes for each item. We'll have the pro, one speaker has three minutes. We have to divide the remaining minutes, which will expand to one minute each, as we did last time, for our each, as we did last time, for our, for the other speakers. So we have Angelica Wilson. You want to come forward, please?
No.
Is Angelica here?
No.
Okay. Moving on to speakers, and we'll, I'll call the names of the first five. Walter Anderson, Elaine Sullivan, Carol Simpson, Michelle Left, and Beverly Close. Yep? Oh, yes, yeah, so we'll, I'll pick those up next. All right? So Walter, one minute?
My name's Walter Anderson, and I've lived in the Bay Park, Claremont area for over 70 years. About 10 years ago, I moved to a quiet cul-de-sac street right behind Claremont High School. About three, four years after we moved in there, they rebuilt the Claremont Athletic Field, putting in lights, bleachers, and unbelievable sound system. So when this first started, they said there was probably going to be one or two events a week. Well, that turned out to be, the lights were on virtually every night during the week, five nights a week. And when they have a game, the kids get noisy because that's what they're supposed to do. But they have aluminum bleachers there now, and when they start stomping their feet, it's The lights light up the whole neighborhood, so it's like daylight. It's, it's noisy, and it's going to change all of Point Loma.
Thank you.
I'm a resident of Point Loma. I worked in San Diego City Schools in 1979. I quit my job there because after one year, when I went for help, I saw that the schools were not really, the administration was really not in support of the students. Students did not have books, but secretaries had secretaries. I quit in 1979 and went over to San Diego State Union High School District, where it's an entirely different approach. I look over here at your mission statement, that, that your mission is to get students to lead and participate, and I fail to see how a super stadium in Point Loma is going to accomplish that. In about 10 or 12 years ago, Dana Junior High was seized by the administration offices, tearing out the locker rooms and cafeteria to ensure that it could never be used as a junior high again. Not one cookie was sold, not one car washed, not one roll of wrapping paper was needed to finance the hundreds of thousands of dollars city schools spent on refurbishing the school for themselves, improvements, and now you're doing the.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol Simpson?
My name is Carol Simpson, and I live right behind the Point Loma High School stadium. That's my house, by the stadium there. I've lived with and not objected to one night a year with the nightlights, the homecoming game. But that one night has brought large crowds, congested streets, blocked driveways, trash in my yard, blaring noise from the PA system, and a lot of light, bright lights at night, shining into our homes. In my case, this is not NIMBYism. The stadium is already in my backyard and has been for 58 years. That's fine. My issue with the proposed project is this. It puts the worst stadium impact in my kitchen, in my living room, in my bedroom. All of this noise, glaring lights.
Thank you. You can't, you can't do that, so. Thank you. Next speaker?
Hello, my name is Michelle Left. I have lived across the street from the Voltaire Stadium entrance since 2008. My four-year-old son will start kindergarten at Loma Portal next year. There are a number of positive aspects to living so close to the school. My son enjoys watching the athletic events on the field, and I love that Keegan will be able to walk to school one day. As a pediatrician, I encourage this form of exercise in a safe neighborhood, as well as the athletic activities of the high school students. Unfortunately, we have also experienced the negative aspects of living so close. In the past eight years, there have been a number of events too large to be appropriately accommodated on the school grounds. Attendees park around our home and leave their cars running on hot days for prolonged periods of time, creating noise and pollution. Noise has been a major issue, not just the noise of the event, but the second, the sound of cars honking and air horns after games. Noise outside the stadium is not controlled by school district or CIF policies. My son's bedroom windows face the stadium. I have to decide at times like these if I should leave his windows open to keep his room from overheating, or close them so the noise doesn't wake him. Please give my son, a future pointer, the same consideration you're giving other high school students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beverly?
Just one night football game affects my family. The district's new policy comprised of endless loopholes allows unlimited events until 11:00 PM. My husband arrives home after a 12-hour workday with no place to park his truck. There are now two choices: stay home to protect our property, which means even with windows shut and stifling, we must cope with mind-numbing cacophony and an ear-splitting PA system, or we leave the area for the entire evening. One year, we left only to learn a group of adult fans boldly trespassed, had a beer party in our secluded backyard, then left their empty cans behind. The approved EIR adds 1,000 uncontrolled stomping feet on a huge aluminum bleacher, just feet from my home. History has shown that it takes a minimum of four to five police cruisers constantly patrolling our streets to maintain order during a night event. This should scream out to the decision-makers why.
Thank you. We got your point. Right, so we have the, yes, citizen, you are next. Apologize, you should have come first, along with Frank. Frank Quensa, and then we'll go out.
The money that you have to build these stadiums was supposed to be used to repair leaking roofs, but Hoover still drips. San Diego High has cockroaches. Encanto Elementary had asbestos that cost a lot more money to fix. The fire hazards in those buildings were discovered when they started taking the walls out, and they didn't have walls that would stop fires. Those are the things you're supposed to be fixing. Instead, you've taken advantage of the generosity of the people of San Diego who approved our property tax money for you to build new, fresh schools, not for you to destroy neighborhoods. And I'm hearing this over and over again from people throughout this city. I don't know how this board stays on this board except for the union money. But I hope that these, these citizens never approve another bond measure for you guys again, ever.
Frank?
Good evening. Frank Quensa, 38-year resident of the neighborhood. My piece talks to the volume one EIR, final EIR, Exhibit F, and Appendix B, and it really revolves around the Benya Light Study conclusions, which have five points. Point one, use of the wrong lighting zone. By using an outdated system, by choosing a favorable zone, Appendix B2 is able to justify unacceptable levels of light trespass. Two, incorrectly using horizontal or vertical illumination instead of perpendicular plane illumination. And I quote, "We believe that at many points of calculation, the light levels will be higher than reported in Appendix B and may cause Appendix B to state different conclusions." Three, failed to consider San Diego County guidelines. Appendix B does not identify or address San Diego County's own guidelines for determining significance of dark skies and glare. Guidelines were addressed properly, they would probably cause Appendix B to state different conclusions. Failed to address AMA policies on light pollution. Appendix B2 has not mentioned the potential impacts on human health.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. Great. So the next, next five speakers, Lisa Schummer, Zosha Shoemaker, Kathy Pratt, George Rutt, and Monica Zincheck. So Lisa?
Thank you for this opportunity to speak. We live about a block and a half away from the high school. We've lived in our home for 35 years. Recently, our mother fell and broke her hip, requiring care 24 hours a day. It became my responsibility to care for her on the graveyard shift, midnight to 8:00 AM. I would go to sleep at 7:00 PM, wake up at 10:30, rested from my shift. When I would leave our home to care for Mom, my husband and I would whisper our goodbyes so we wouldn't disturb our neighbors. I would head through our very quiet neighborhood, and almost every home was dark. Everybody was peacefully tucked in for the night. I wasn't the only one who went to sleep early in our neighborhood. Our neighbors had three little toddlers and a newborn baby. Peaceful, predictable sleep was vital to that family. Peaceful, undisturbed sleep was vital to me. Numerous unpredictable nights of disturbing noise and sound and lights would prevent me from doing my job. I, thank you.
Thank you. Zosha?
My husband and I live on Voltaire Street, four houses from the main entrance to the field. Our backyard and all three of our bedroom windows overlook the field. Night games affect us in the following ways. We have to park six to eight blocks from our own home. Due to noise, we cannot rest or sleep until the game is over. According to the recent EIR, this would mean 11:00 PM up to seven nights a week. We do not have to turn on a single light in our home. With a new baby on the way, this is not acceptable. Point Loma High School was not built to accommodate night games. Why not hold them at a site that is, such as Mission Bay High School? We support our local high school. My sister went to Point Loma High School. But the cost to us is too great to have a legally binding and enforceable field use policy that significantly restricts nighttime usage. Before voting tonight, please reconsider sitting down and coming to a mutually beneficial agreement with the neighbors of Point Loma High School. We are individuals. We are affected. Thank you for your time.
Kathy Pratt?
Good evening. My name is Kathy Pratt. I live at the corner of Clove and Voltaire Street. I've lived in that residence for 43 years. I observed many things, good and bad, involving the high school and the high school students. I myself have three kids. I have five grandkids. I'm a former elementary school teacher. And I want you to understand, one of our major concerns is the traffic that would be coming to this area, especially with bringing in the traffic and the unsafe behavior, renting out this facility night after night, and inflicting this kind of damage to this neighborhood. It is a quiet, peaceful nighttime neighborhood. I watched all day long the kids driving around. They're, they're typical teenage inexperienced drivers. They do stupid things. They endanger themselves.
Thank you. George Rutt? Out you are. Monica?
Yeah, hi, I'm Monica Zincheck. I own a home adjacent to the football field, Point Loma. In addition to all the other issues that my neighbors have expressed, I wanted to say that Point Loma High School used to be a good neighbor to us, and they policed their events. It was one event a year that the whole neighborhood looked forward to in many ways because it brought a lot of spirit to the neighborhood. However, things have changed, and as Mr. Barrera said, the police, policing of the events is important, and it's important to respect those, but that isn't being done. Vandalism in my home is included, broken bottles thrown over the bleachers into my yard, at my animals that live in my yard, trash thrown in my, my yard, obscenities yelled at, you know, late in the evening and everything, and there are small children in the neighborhood. Those are the kinds of things that worry me, that I don't think were adequately addressed in the environmental impact report.
Thank you. George Rutt?
Yeah, I live on Voltaire Street, in the corner of Voltaire and Udall. That's not the beach side of Voltaire, that's the quaint Hamlet side of Voltaire, a nice windy road that winds up to the top of the hill where the high school is located. The one major event last year was homecoming, where they imported some lights. There were no aluminum bleachers, but you could certainly hear the crowd very loudly. The one single large event last year, there was a major accident right out in front of our, our house, requiring police presence for half of the day, who was before the game, indicating that these sorts of things happen outside of the event time window. These events do not fit the character of our quaint Hamlet. I encourage and invite each of you with my heart to come to Voltaire and Clove on any evening that you'd like after dark, and have a look at our neighborhood before you seek to change it. Thank you very much for your time.
Next five speakers, Rich Kopola, Pam Charlton, Carlton, Kim Leary, and Joseph Leary, and Anne Fatheringham. Fatheringham.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the order.
So Rich, Pam, Kim, Joseph, and Anne.
Rich Kopola, alumni of Point Loma High School. Point Loma is a, is an older neighborhood with small setbacks and small driveways. When we come home from work, there is no parking near our homes for a block due to the stadium events. Parking is important, is impacted during stadium events. There have been times that students and parents have resorted to parking in driveway easements, such that we cannot remove our cars from our driveway. Due to small houses and driveway easements, the EIR overestimated the amount of residential street parking available per street. Simply put, without onsite parking at Point Loma High School, there are too many cars at events wandering the streets, looking for parking, and not enough space. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam?
Hi, I'm Pam Carlton, and I've lived in the neighborhood for 30 years. I live about three and a half blocks away from the high school. I want to reiterate that we are supporters of Point Loma High. Those of us in the community always participate in the fundraisers. We've helped the boys on the football team buy their uniforms. My husband, 15, 20 years ago, when there was no money in the budget for maintenance, I don't know if any of you were around then, the high school was looking a little shabby. He went down, round with a pick and a sack and cleaned up from Clove all the way around Chatsworth. We had no children at the school. We were trying to be good neighbors. We're asking for the same consideration. My major concern is the parking. I would have thought the parking plan would have been in place before anything else started on this whole plan to invite more people into our neighborhood. Thank you.
So are you Anne?
Hello, my name is Kim Leary. I'm a 35-year resident. I live on Zola Street, which empties directly into the Point Loma High School parking lot. One of the goals that I understood of the whole project going on here was going to increase parking, and this had been a topic of multiple meetings that I had attended. But ultimately, as described, the project will actually decrease parking by eliminating all the temporary parking spaces, which are like 60. So we're going to go down from 240 spaces to 180. 180 spaces available for 2,500 students equals one spot for 14, every 14 students. District policy says one spot for every three students. So already, you guys are way off your policy. You want to bring a lot more people in, but we just don't have the parking in our neighborhood. Night games, we need it because everybody's coming home from work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joseph?
Hello, my name's Joseph Leary, my wife. I've been a resident of Loma Portal for 62 years. I went to Point Loma, went to Loma Portal, and it's just a wonderful neighborhood. What people have forgotten is that Point Loma is a neighborhood school, was never designed to take in- It was never designed to take in thousands of kids, which it does. Its footprint is too small. It is not a big enough school to handle the amount of kids we have there now. And we don't have enough classrooms yet. We're right now spending money for lights. I don't think that's important. I think getting the kids through school so they learn something is better than lights and sound. And you're bringing people from off-campus. It's not helping our campus, it's helping them. Who, who takes care of the lawns after everybody leaves? Do we get the money? Does the school get the money? I heard, no. That you do. You get the money. You get to spend it. You get to do what you want with it, not to the schools, not for the kids. And I think we've got to get to the kids.
Thank you.
Good evening. The American Medical Association adopted an official policy statement at their annual meeting in Chicago on June 14th, 2016. It stated about lighting, "Cool it and dim it." The AMA statement recommends that outdoor lighting at night should have a color temperature no greater than 3,000 Kelvin. The proposed stadium lighting has a very high blue content greater than 3,000 Kelvin. The, uh, it is so concentrated that it can, uh, cause severe glare and, in addition, problems seen clearly for safe driving and walking at night, documented by research. The AMA policy states also that studies have shown that the lighting affects circadian's physiolo- normal circadian physiology, and this could lead to serious health consequences, and most likely, it affects sleep.
All right, thank you. The next five speakers, Catherine Shaw, Tom Becker, Greg Leff, Joan Cunningham, and John Cunningham. Catherine?
Catherine's not here.
Okay. Tom Becker?
Thank you to the board for the opportunity to speak.
Greg Leff?
I'm sorry?
He is not here.
Uh, Joan Cunningham? And John Cunningham?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Joan.
My husband and I attended Point Loma High School, as our four children did. We love the school. We totally support the athletic program, but our neighborhood is unique. Our homes are not, not at all ready for lights and constant noise. Five nights a week with blaring speakers, and traffic is the main concern of safety. There's also many kids that come at night, sometimes get into trouble because night games, unfortunately. A lot of things go along with that that are not neighborhood-friendly, where we have so many problems from the night. The one night game that we've had, trash, that people in yards, destroying people's property, and it's not a safe thing for our neighborhood. Please consider changing your program. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. John Cunningham? John, sir, what's your name?
Tom Becker.
Have you turned in a slip?
Yeah, you just called my name.
I did, okay, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my family lives at Voltaire Street, just adjacent to Point Loma High School Athletic Field, and I look forward to sending my daughters to Point Loma High School, classes of 2032 and the one due in eight weeks, class of 2034. Point Loma High School's been a stable and quiet neighbor during typical non-work hours, though I believe the EIR designation of the neighborhood as a highly urbanized does not accurately reflect the true nature of the neighborhood, and the assumption of the field use seven nights a week until 11:00 PM with minimal impact is erroneous. Uh, in appro- uh, I appreciate the effort to generally reduce the impact to the field project, however, I sincerely ask the board to consider making the field use policy recently adopted binding and enforceable.
Thank you, John. Next five speakers, Kent Schirmer, Roger Alper, Kim Ward, Chuck Primo, and Gary Shaw. Kent is first, followed by Richard.
Thank you. Uh, the dialogue throughout this discussion concerning stadium lighting has always and should be about the students and their best interest. For over 91 years, Point Loma High School has served the community with outstanding academic curriculum and championship athletics. Within that time period, graduates from this great high school have become successful professionals. At the last meeting in May, a bright young student from Point Loma High, Lisa Ragula, talked about being accepted at Duke after excelling in her academic studies and playing lacrosse, basketball, and being a band major. This young woman, in her tremendous high school experience, captures perfectly that a football stadium in an iconic neighborhood that hasn't had lights for 91 years, hasn't precluded her or any of her classmates, classmates in any way from being anything but successful. We do not need to destroy this iconic neighborhood by trying to be equal with other campuses by the installation of stadium lights. This school and this location, with its current stadium and its small, unique configuration, is what's best for the students. Lisa and her proudly stated accomplishments confirms this. Thank you.
So we have Kent, Kent Schirmer? Richard?
Richard Leary.
Alper and Kim Ward? Okay.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, good evening. I'm a proud Pointer Dad. I've been in the neighborhood for 30 years. It's a common refrain you've heard here tonight, everybody's a long-term resident. I come, my, I come because the, the neighborhood is going to change. If you go forward with this project, you're going to change both the nature of the school and the nature of the neighborhood in ways that it'll be never able to recover from. The lighting is extraordinary, and even in your own EIR, it admits that the lighting impacts can't be mitigated, and yet, your own EIR didn't even use the right tests. Benya, the professional engineer, came to us and gave us five points, and Mr. Quenka told you about earlier, the wrong test, the wrong, um, paradigm was used to test the lighting. But even with that, even with all these biases, you still conclude the lighting is going to be an unmitigable effect on the neighborhood. It shouldn't happen. The school district's justification is that equity. All schools should be treated the same, but all schools aren't the same, and all neighborhoods aren't the same.
Thank you. Kim, Kim Ward?
Hello, my name is Kim Ward, and I just want you to put yourself in our position. You know, you've got a place, and you're living in it, and all of a sudden, you know, it's changing totally, and it's going to be loud and a lot of lights. And all I got to say is, you'd be sitting here right now if, if it happened to you. You would, because it's an insult. Anyway, you know, we need, we need to turn again to, to the Benya study that was completed in February 2016. In May 2014, the application, San Diego Unified School District submitted a draft lighting, studying, developing, based on data provided by the lighting vendor, Musco. At that time, we, Benya, conducted a detailed examination of the site and neighborhood. In the analysis presented in 2014, and the summary in this current appendix, God, Lord.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Chuck?
Like the amateur hour.
My name is Chuck Primo. My wife Lori and I have lived in the Point Loma High School area since 1987. To complete the data presented by my neighbors, I'll further fill in information from the Benya study, also followed, as also follows from Exhibit F. All calculations made by Musco and presented in the appendix are in the horizontal or vertical plane and not consistent with modern standards. Applicant used an incorrect lighting zone in its submission while using an outdated lighting reference table. We know that Musco produced all of the calculations, but Musco applicant should have known to use the PPI, that's perpendicular plane illumination calculations. PPI values will always be greater than the horizontal or the vertical illumination. In summary, there's no question that the substantial and immitigable light intrusion inherent in the Point Loma High School stadium lights plan.
Thank you. Yeah, we saw, we heard the reference. Gary Shaw?
Hi, I'm Gary Shaw. Thank you for your time. I live about a block from Point Loma High, so we can hear activity on the field even without amplification. Let's talk a bit about what we cannot hear. Sometimes, every four minutes, it's so loud in Point Loma that we have to start yelling to be heard, and sometimes, we just have to stop what we're doing because the planes are so loud, we cannot hear. To compensate, play-by-play announcers don't pause, games don't stop. Rather, the announcers talk louder, the volume gets turned up, the music plays louder, to try to overcome the jet engines that roar so loud that it shakes your entire body. That's because they're taking off. They're not gliding into the field as they do over Balboa Park and near San Diego High School. Point Lomans absorb the brunt of the civic imperative, a good city airport, and what this project proposes wrongly, claiming another imperative, is to fill those precious moments of quiet with more noise.
Thank you for your comment. Thank you. Next, next five speakers, Dr. Leslie Penzess, if I said that correctly, Mike Bouvet, Angela Shaw, Lyndy Kopola, and Alan, I can't read the last name. D- L-O-F-F-E?
Left.
Left, okay. Alan Left, thank you. So, Dr. Leslie?
Hello, good evening. My name is Dr. Leslie Penzess. I have an acoustical consultant in the last 28 years in the state of California and in the city of San Diego. I was hired by the homeowners around Point Loma High School to make a noise study, and my conclusion is that the noise without mitigation is so high if you would stand 100 or 150 feet from interstate fire. Means that, that noise is intolerable. Mitigation. Now, if you built a 20 or 30-foot-high sound wall, still is not enough. So the only possibility is that you cover the whole stadium by a dome, a dome, which exists, you know, some sports stadiums, okay? Not my creation, but it's very expensive. Okay, now?
Thank you. We, we've got the dome suggestion. Mike Bouvet?
Hi, my name is Mike Bouvet. I live at, uh, Voltaire Street for the last 20 years, in close proximity to the stadium. I've always been a supporter of Point Loma High School, been a good neighbor. Um, I did become concerned when I saw what was happening to other neighborhoods in San Diego, constant noise, air horns screaming, and non-stop commentary broadcast over the PA system at Claremont High School. You, you will be breaking the law if you approve this project tonight. Basically, the San Diego City Ordinance says between 7:00 and 10:00 PM at night, you should not have more than 45 decibels in a residential neighborhood. During the homecoming game, the decibels were 75 decibels. That's 30 decibels higher, or eight times higher than what the San Diego City Ordinance says that should go on in neighborhoods. Mitigation measures include limiting the frequency with enforceable field use policy, earlier curfews, installing unmodifiable decibel governors on public address system, use of other stadiums such as Mission High. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Angela Shaw?
I have lived in Loma Portal most of my life, in the house my parents built in 1950. I'm one of three, three generations of my family that have attended Point Loma High School. My house is around the corner from the Voltaire Stadium entrance, so every time there's an event at the field, the street is lined with cars due to the inadequate campus parking and the lot that is five blocks from the entrance. The EIR says that hundreds of cars will need to park on the streets, and that we can expect high school and third-party adult and youth events at the field every week, any day of the week, any time of the year, and up to an 11:00 PM curfew. So my family will need to keep the stadium event calendar available and refer to it so we'll know if we can park next to our house when we come home from work or school. So I'm asking that the board please stop and reconsider this athletic upgrade plan. Please be the good neighbor that my family has been to Point Loma High School for the past 66 years. Thank you.
Linda? Followed by Alan.
Thank you for your time. My name is Lynda Kopola. I am a 25-year resident of Point Loma. I'm here tonight to tell you that I'm a Point Loma supporter. I am asking you tonight to reconsider portions of the whole-site modernization plan that relates to facility use and parking. This portion of this, the portion of this plan is both detrimental and non-sustainable to Point Loma High School, the district, and the surrounding community. The EIR explicitly states that the campus only has 147 onsite parking spaces. This only provides 24% of the total number of required onsite parking spaces based on district standards. The EIR, the EIR did not consider that much of the residential street parking is already in use by residents due to our small setbacks in driveways. The EIR states that the field would be available and to be used any day up until 11:00 PM, and that any events could be expected to occur with the stadium at full capacity, as well as there is no restriction on the principal's ability to schedule its use, e.g., he can change it at any time. The impact of this high-volume use will cause excessive wear and tear to school facilities, as well as to, thank you.
Thank you. Alan? Alan, yeah?
My name is Alan Left, and I am a Pointer. I graduated in 1980 and played varsity football, soccer, and track. As a retired police officer, I would like to speak about safety. I handed out copies of old Pointer student newspapers that addressed the safety issue. The first page provides a statement from a San Diego City Police Supervisor in 1973 after a number of students were injured at a Point Loma Kearney night game. Quote, "Night football games should not be held. At night, especially a person with criminal intent appreciates the anonymity he would not have otherwise during the day." This officer goes on to say, quote, "Most of the juveniles who start the trouble aren't in school. They have graduated or dropped out and were troublemakers when they were in school. As a former police officer in the 90s, this is my experience as well. In addition, many of these troublemakers were also members of San Diego's various gangs. I spoke with a San Diego police sergeant recently who has experience at Point Loma High School. He expressed the same concerns and said, 'If this was my neighborhood, if for no other reason than the gang issue, I would fight tooth and nail to stop this project.'"
Thank you.
Thank you for your consideration.
There were last seven speakers, Tom Ford, Cynthia Snyder, Louis Lucas, Matt Schoenmaker, Lynda Lloyd, David Dick, and Bob Attili. I don't know why. Tom Ford, Cynthia Snyder, Louis Lucas, Matt Schoenmaker, Lynda Lloyd, David Dick, and then Bob Attili, last one. So Tom? Are you Tom?
I'm not Tom, I'm Cynthia. I don't see Tom.
Tom's not here.
Tom's not here? So are you Cynthia?
I'm Cynthia.
Thank you, Cynthia.
Um, there is a widespread sentiment that those of us who are fighting to preserve our neighborhood are against the students of Point Loma High School, but nothing could be further from the truth. We too want what's best for the kids, but we believe that by preserving the neighborhood, we will be doing what is best for the kids. Personally, I'm not enthusiastic about Friday night lights, and I'm not a fan of football for kids. I am enthusiastic about the arts, and especially the music education for kids. Kids can learn many fine lessons by participating in competitive sports. They learn to cooperate as a team and to do their best in pursuit of a common goal. But insofar as the goal is winning, there will always be losers. In music, when everyone does their best, there are no losers, there are only winners. With that in mind, I have a few remarks regarding the FEIR's treatment of mitigation measures for the environmental impacts of this project at Point Loma High School. Specifically, the possible use of alternative sites addresses the need.
Thank you. We heard the alternative site option. Thank you. Next. Louis Lucas? Hi, Louise, sorry?
I think I'm next. I'm Louise Lucas. Point Loma High School, class of 1970.
Point Loma High School class of 1978 and mother of five PLHS sons. Two of those made a lot of noise in their years as their part of the marching band, but all of us have always recognized that we needed to respect the neighbors. Point Loma has a 90-plus-year history, call it a tradition, of making its size work, of moving sports teams off-site to more spacious venues, and of supporting the very neighbors who support it. This project is mean and disrespectful to these neighbors. I implore you to reject it and to continue our tradition by finding a more appropriate venue for Friday Night Lights. Thank you.
Lynda? And David?
Do you have a slip for Richard Leary?
No, I don't.
Because he submitted a slip, and this young man here has been sitting here for a while, and he'd like to say a few words.
Well, right now, we have Matt. Is Matt here?
Yes.
Right, Matt?
My wife and I are college sweethearts. We bought our first house less than a year ago, and if you've ever stood on the football field at Point Loma, you've seen our house. I have a smile on my face because we're expecting our first child in November. Yay. Community is important to me. I support schools and students, and I want the Pointers to have Friday Night Lights, but it doesn't have to be at Point Loma High School. Christian High School plays all their games at Granite Hills. Horizon High School, Rancho Buena Vista, St. Augustine, all play Friday Night Lights on other campuses. Mission Bay High School has an excellent facility. It sits on 36 acres, while Point Loma High School is on 16 acres. Mission Bay is surrounded by a major thoroughfare, golf course, and park. Point Loma is surrounded by a two-lane road and houses. I think we all agree that the impacts of light, noise, traffic, and parking are tremendously different between the two sites. The EIR for Point Loma and lack of an EIR for Mission Bay are proof of that fact. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Do we have Lynda Lloyd? Lynda?
Hello, this is a young man who put a slip in, I don't know what happened.
We don't have the slip. But what did, state your name, please?
My name is Richard Leary.
Okay, Richard, you have one minute.
All right, so, I have lived in Point Loma my entire life, and I just want to say that I think this plan is not a very good plan because, first of all, there's the lights and the parking situation, but the sound system too. You're going to ratchet it up over the planes, and the planes are measured at over 110 decibels at my house. So that's extremely loud, and I can't imagine for the people bordering the, bordering the field, let alone me, which I live four blocks away, to hear this sound because I hear the band noise just regular when they're practicing during the year. So I don't know what the haps is, but I hope that you turn down this proposal for the sake of my neighbors and for me if you are put in this position. Thank you.
Now we have Lynda, David, and our last speaker, Bob.
My name is Lynda Lloyd. I've lived in the neighborhood and across the street from Point Loma High School for 20 years. The Point Loma High School field use policy is a loosely worded document that provides numerous opportunities for school and district administrators to exempt activities from the limit of nighttime events in the policy. The policy can be changed by the school board with just a two-week notice to the community, and there is no mechanism for the community to respond to those changes beyond two-minute statements provided as public comment at the board meeting where the changes will be approved. Finally, there are no consequences to the school or the school district should the field use policy be violated, given that the district is both creator and enforcer of the policy. The only way to protect the surrounding residential neighborhood from the negative impacts of the overuse of the stadium, day or night, is to make the policy an enforceable agreement with a neutral third party responsible for its enforcement. Thank you for listening.
Good evening. Just ironically, I was the one who wrote that article in 1973 that was handed out to you about the incident at Kearney High School, so it's sort of ironic I'm here tonight. In late 19, excuse me, late 2013, I was asked to serve on an ad hoc committee that was formed for the purpose of investigating this plan and figuring out whether there was a way to protect the neighborhood and at the same time, go forward with the project for the students and for the school. That ad hoc committee met for several weeks, and I thought we were making great progress, but we had a lot of work to do. That work was short-fused when the district decided that they were going to draft their own field use policy, and that policy came to this board for approval in 2014, two years before today, two years before this project was even being approved. How could you have a field use policy that was in place two years before the project was even approved? Nevertheless, the project, the field use policy was approved. It's full of loopholes, it's full of ambiguity, it needs to be reviewed. I urge you tonight, do not take action, and let us have an opportunity to sit down and negotiate a binding and legally effective field use agreement. Thank you.
I'm Bob Ottilie, the attorney for the neighbors. Thank you very much for listening to them tonight. The most compelling argument, obviously, in favor of this project was the one that students and their parents made, which was that these kids would like to play Friday Night Football. I understand that because I used to do that. I've helped over 200 student athletes in this community get eligible to play sports, and they also want their parents to be able to see them. But I want to remind you, Point Loma High School used to play Friday nights every single game. You rented Mesa College for them to play, and then you stopped making the rent payments and forced them to play on Friday afternoons at 4:00 p.m. So the reason the kids at Point Loma can't play on Friday nights and their parents can't see them is because of you, not because of these folks. You can change that. Horizon High School, Christian, St. Augustine, RBV, Uni, all play at other sites. The Chargers, the Aztecs, Point Loma's home baseball team, there are reasonable options. I asked David Beazer, the athletic director at Christian High School, why his school rents down the street. He said, "Because we want to be good neighbors."
Thank you.
Thank you.
That includes public comment on this item? Do you have board questions and comments?
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions. I remember having this conversation four or five years ago with Hoover High School, and a lot of the same concerns were raised by the community. And at Hoover High School, they've, they've had the, the lights in the stadium for many, many years, and I'm curious if I, if staff could speak to whether or not the, the district and the school have upheld their limitations on their field use over the last many years, or have that, has the, has the school or the district gone above and beyond that? And what are the impacts from the, the community there at Hoover High School over the last many years?
I think Ms. Donovan can comment on that.
Okay.
I can, and also, Mr. Dolgoff probably has more detailed information, but it's been reported to me that the field use policy that we developed for Hoover High School is working well. I've received no issues or inquiries about any problems there. We have also canceled the permits that were objectionable at Claremont High School so that the VAVI Soccer League is no longer using those fields nightly.
Yes, my understanding that the, the school site governance, as well as the neighbors meet regularly and review the field use policy and the overall event plans, and that things are going well at Hoover High School.
Has Hoover High School, over the last many years, ever exceeded their limitations on event, night events at the school?
Not to the best of my knowledge.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Is there board member comments, questions?
I just wanted to say, I know we've had this conversation and dialogue at the board here for quite some, for quite some time, and that I, along with a lot of the other trustees, strongly support, with every fiber of my being, reasonable limitations on the number of events per year. I remember when we first started this conversation, there was somebody on the board who's not here anymore that was advocating for an unlimited number of ability of the district or the school to use it an unlimited number of times, and through a lot of collaboration and conversations and meetings and discussions, that we've limited that through a field use policy that other schools have not violated over the past several years. And I think that that speaks to our commitment, or my commitment as a trustee, and I know that many of the other board members feel the same as I do, that, that we want to make sure that we're complying with the field use policy, that there's just a finite number of evenings where the, where the facility would be used for the benefit of the students, and that's key. And I know that when we heard about the issues with Claremont High School, we immediately followed up with that, and now the field use facilities at Claremont are being used for the benefit of the students, and the limitations there are, are in place. So I think there's a lot of other concerns that we, we've heard this evening, and it's kind of unfortunate because I remember last time we had this conversation, we also heard from folks, students, staff, and many, many community members that are in support of this project with limitations, and those are the limitations that I'm supporting tonight, so that the field will be there for the academic and scholastic benefit of the students, and that the impacts on the community, I think, will be limited by the, the field use policy. Thank you.
Okay. And we had a number of references to the legality of the project. We have some reflections, either from Donovan or early.
Not at this time. The legality of the project was discussed at prior meetings.
Okay. So the...
Can we hear what your...
So this is between the board. So, the, the field use agreement policy was put together in order to address some of the issues that the community had, from the speaker that was here on May 24th, who was chaired that group. It was made up of people from, from all sides. It was, it was a negotiated effort in order to determine what could we do in order to regulate the use of the field, and a number of, of mitigations were put in place in order to, to have this project address the critical needs of the community, and that's where we arrived at the 18. And there's some concern about whether this field use has holes or whether it's viable, and our sense is that we have a viable policy that will govern the use of the fields, and as a board, and as, we will do everything we can to make sure that that gets implemented correctly. I understand that the last board meeting was moved and seconded by trustee Barrera and, or seconded by trustee Beizer to direct, ask staff to take a look at ways that we can strengthen the field use agreement policy in order to involve parents if ever there was to be consideration of a change, and I believe that staff is then working, working on that. So the effort on May 24th was to present this item, to hear concerns and issues, to take a look at the, the final environmental impact report, and to meet with the requirements of SECA, which, which we did. Those issues were presented. We had staff present a very comprehensive report. Public did comment regarding that. Tonight, I didn't hear anything new that was not presented then, and the effort then as it was now was to make sure community had a voice, to make sure the concerns were presented, and, and the purpose for the, for the mitigations was to deal with those that we could, and then those areas where we couldn't, we needed to assess the, the value versus the, the concern. And, and when the board made a decision then, was that the value for the lights outweighed the concerns of, of the damage that, and the, of the community, and that, and that was the value, value of the, of the project. So in that light, do we have any other comments, questions? So there has, there was a motion and a second to approve the Point Loma High School whole-site modernization and athletic facilities upgrade project. If there's no other comment, cast your vote.
I'll move item H2.
H2 has been moved, there's a second. So, um, so you missed, uh...
Your speakers in the front row is going to...
Introduce it? How many do we have?
There's nine.
Okay.
One over here.
Oh, just the nine. So we got two minutes each?
That's eight or nine.
Two minutes each, we'll do it?
Remember, it's 10 minutes, they're all opposed.
Oh, so you have one minute?
Yes.
So Ms. Donovan, you introduce the item?
Yes, thank you, Board President McQuarrie. The next item is adoption of staff findings regarding the closure of Evangeline Roberts' Institute of Learning Charter School and affirmation that the eight outcomes and voluntary closure provisions of the approved charter, charter were material to the board's approval of that charter, without which it would not have been approved.
Can't hear you. We cannot hear you. We must repeat.
Yeah, we'll wait for a moment for people to leave, and then we'll screen that.
Dr. McQuarrie, would you like me to repeat?
Right, I think we can do that now. Thank you.
Why don't we give these folks a minute to get out so that we can have some quiet? Thank you. This item pertains to closure of Evangeline Roberts' Institute of Learning Charter School pursuant to the terms of its charter, adoption of staff findings that the eight committed standards and criteria that were approved within the charter have not been met, triggering voluntary closure on part of Evangeline Roberts' Institute of Learning, and affirmation that those conditions were material provisions of the charter without which the board would not have approved it. This action is coming forward at this time because, as you maybe recall, in February of last year, the board approved Evangeline's charter with specified, a commitment from Evangeline to meet certain specified standards and criteria or voluntarily surrender their charter. That, that agreement and those standards were incorporated into the charter and were a material term of what the board approved. Staff has determined that those, those criteria have not been met and that the voluntary closure requirements have been triggered, and so staff is recommending at this time that the board adopt the staff's findings and affirm the materiality of the provisions.
Okay. We have public speakers. We have eight, so we'll have two minutes each. Christopher Carpenter, I'm sorry, one minute each. Christopher Carpenter, Sheila Malvo, Walter Hariot, and James Sloan, Deli Moore, Ricky Williamson, Naomi Medina, and Shania Williams. So are you Christopher?
A point of clarification quickly, President McQuarrie, what is the rationale for limiting the speakers to one minute at this item?
The bylaws require for an item, a gendized item, 10 minutes for and 10 minutes against, total of 20 minutes for the agenda, and so, so that's where, that's where we are.
Excuse me, if some of our folks decided to, to sit down, would he be able to have a longer time, or would we be able to divide the time differently?
We have, yeah, we have nine speakers here.
I would prefer you make an exception, as you did with other items on the agenda, since this is discussing a school closure. But again, it's up to your discretion, Board President.
So we have a total of 10 minutes, and you figure out how you want to divide it out.
May we have a moment to discuss then?
Sure.
Thank you.
So your speakers in any order, and you have 10 minutes?
We have them in order. Thank you, President.
Sure.
Good evening, board members. My name is Christopher Carpenter from the offices of Young Minion Corp., and I, we represent Evangeline Roberts' Institute of Learning. It's very disappointing to be here this evening, especially to be heard last on the agenda on this item, considering that it is a school closure, and we have many people who have missed work, who have put off work, and their students are here late at night as well. The issue we have here tonight, and the recommendation brought to you before by the staff, is patently unlawful, and a restriction on the due process rights of the, of this charter school. It flies in the face of the concept of parental choice. The eight conditions that you required circumvent the requirements under law for revocation of a charter school. It deprives the school of its right to respond to findings by the board that they, that the school is not meeting its, its conditions or requirements under the law. These are legal necessities for the type of action you're considering tonight, which is to revoke and close a school where 59% of the students are of African-American descent or are African-American. not specifically outlining the conditions, but on minor technical difficulties that the school may have had. For example, the timelines required of the Secretary of State from the point of filing until the point of posting was out of the control of the charter school, yet that counts as a strike against us and a reason to close us. I think that's very disappointing. Even today, just an hour before this meeting, staff sent a letter to this school emphatically stating, and without board action, to inform the school it is not permitted to operate past June 30th. I think that's interesting because the only persons who are available and who are legally entitled to make that determination is the board itself. Lastly, I urge this board to please respect the law, the Charter Schools Act. Please respect and provide this opportunity, the school this opportunity and a fair chance to continue operating as they have actually met and substantially complied with all the conditions. Their students are performing well above what was requested from district staff. You have a choice before you. You can continue attempting to force extra legal and invalid requirements on charter schools and subjecting them, or at least subjecting yourselves, the district to potential liability in suit and more funds being spent on legal actions. Or you can reject the staff's recommendation and allow the school to work to educate students and to meet those goals that we have outlined in our charter petition. We would like the opportunity to do so. At the very least, we request that you table this action. These parents chose this school because it represented an opportunity for them to educate their children in the way that they wanted and they saw fit. Your staff has decided to revoke that choice from them and not allow them to select the education their students desire. We ask that you respect their choice and reject this item. Thank you.
Yeah. Now, remember, you have only 10 minutes and we're not monitoring the sub-time, so.
My name is Sheila Malvo, and I'm the principal of Evangeline Roberts Institute of Learning. ERIO has not and will not voluntarily surrender its charter. You understand that this is unlawful and invalid, given the alternative, the eight outcomes or the recommendations to be denied. We were, when we went, we went with the eight outcomes. We were in a rock and a hard place in order to continue the school that seemed to be our only choice, not understanding the process that would take place. Even with that, I contend that eight outcomes have been met. My concern is that two people can make a decision to close a school. The staff can make, the staff can make arbitrary conclusion at the expense of ERIO. This does not make sense to me. Their findings are contrary to ours, were the second pair of eyes. Who monitors this charter office personnel so that fair and consistent practices go across the board? Are all charter schools treated the way that ERIO was handled? Are they equally rude and decondescending to other schools as they are to ERIO? Do they come and type line and read every single word on everybody's document as they did at ERIO? Somebody tell me, does this happen at other places? Well, we have, we have shown, they have shown us the value they place in our children, which are basically black and brown. By the way, we are being cast away like a piece of trash. We have shown our children that they can excel in academics and improve by a whole performance band. In turn, we get mocked by our results as if our children, teachers, and staff's hard work doesn't count. Our overall performance is at 80% or above, a major accomplishment for our students. The charter school office has shown that it's okay to disrupt the educational journey to success for our students. Our small classroom environments and additional support staff has been able to fill the emotional and behavior needs of our children. We do not remove our children. We find ways to work with them to create a road to empower them for success. We actually take, we actually take all students. We do not cream. Society deems our black and brown students in a very negative way. When they see them on media, how they portrayed, there is many stereotypes. We know about racial profiling. Our black and brown students are, are subject to this daily. However, our charter school office wants to discredit our children for what they, what they do. Why? Is it because of our location, our ethnicity, or is it that we really care? Our children are brilliant, innovative, resilient. Our students can come to, come to school from your schools, the ones that they failed from. Some coming to us as second graders, not knowing their letters and sounds, and when they leave us, they're reading and writing. We said that he could and he did. We accepted the behavior issues that were rejected and transitioned them to eager learners. We refuse to be part of the process of schools through prison pipelines that seem to ravage our, our communities. We are an integrated part of this community. The nonprofit status was brought back in compliance 10 weeks later. My question is, what harm did it do to students' learning? What harm did it do to the well-being of our kids and the environment of our school? The answer is none. We understand that we might be part of a budget issue, but go and find somewhere else to get it. We save lives and our children matter.
Sorry, what was the speaker, what was the speaker's, what's your name? What was the last speaker's name, please?
She's the president.
Thank you very much, Sheila.
She's the president.
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Walter Hariot. I have two, three children and a granddaughter that attend Evangeline Roberts. They're sitting in the audience right now. Stand up. I have twin daughters that are in kindergarten, a daughter that's in first grade, I have a granddaughter that's in kindergarten. And to close this school would be, would do a tremendous disservice to the community, to the children that it served. I mean, this school is a, it's laid a solid foundation for these kids to go forward and become productive citizens in society. And if they were to be disbanded, if these kids were to be sent somewhere else, and my wife works at this school, and she comes home and she talks about these kids. She has a personal relationship with these kids, like, like they are our own kids. And she, I mean, she, she sees the potential in them. She sees the desire to learn and want to do better. And, and Evangeline Roberts gives them that. And to close that school down would, would just be, would be horrific. It would be horrific to the community. And, and I urge you to, to vote no, table the matter, do whatever you need to do, but do not close Evangeline Roberts. Thank you.
Next speaker? You have one minute left in your 10 minutes.
Okay. My name is Roxanna Diaz. I'm Roxanna Diaz. I'm a teacher at Evangeline Roberts. When I got to the school, I, I got there from Montebello Unified District, and so I got some of the kids, and I'm like, they're really troubled. You know what? They need to be expelled. They can't handle being in a, in a classroom. And Ms. Malvo, the principal of our school, came in and took those kids and walked around with them and taught them what they needed to learn herself for one, two, or three weeks until they were able to come back into my classroom. And I looked at her and I said, what are you doing? She said, we don't give up on them. These kids already come from parents that gave up on them. We're not going to give up on them too. And if you can't deal with that, maybe this isn't the place for you, Ms. Diaz. But I could because I come from the same place. I'm a Latina woman and I come from the same place, and these kids need us. They need Evangeline Roberts. Please, please say no.
We did, we did have one last speaker. Did you want to take, take a minute?
Hi, my name is Billy Moore. I'm the president of ABC Youth Foundation, which was founded by my dad, Archie Moore. I go into Evangeline Roberts twice weekly. I go into seven other different schools across the city. I go into Juvenile Hall twice a week. Evangeline Roberts, those kids at Evangeline Roberts, when I go into Juvenile Hall, I've seen kids from every school that I attend, that I go to. I've never seen a kid from Evangeline Roberts in Juvenile Hall. Mr. McQuary, I have your card. I want to send you a video that was done at Evangeline Roberts. KUSI-TV has came and done a special event on them because of these young black and brown kids. Because what they, what happens there, they learn how to step off in life with their best foot forward, without cowardice, but with courage and dignity. We, you see all this crap that's going on across our country today. Keep that, keep that school open. We have a chance of that for darn sure not happening in the community where Evangeline Roberts is located. So please, I beg of you all, to reconsider, reconsider what's on the table. If something needs to be done, help them do it. Help them fix it. Because that's what you're here for. Not just to pass judgment, but to help make a difference. And that's what we have to do with our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So that completes public comment. And Board, do you have questions or concerns? Any?
Ever since I visited that school, I think at every meeting, I've made some comment about this school. And I've not changed my position on that school. First of all, I, I cannot support the motion to close it. I know I was not here when you made the decision. I was not on the board at that time and was not party to all the discussions that went on before. But for me personally, after having gone out to that school and seeing what's going on, was very interested in the comment that 59% of that student population is African-American. I don't think we have another school other than Ifton that has that high percent of African-American students. And Ifton has a higher percent of Africans rather than just African-Americans. So to see that school and its environment and the positive things going on there was kind of eye-opening for me. The issue about the Secretary of State and the 501(c)(3), I, I personally have had some experience with getting things through the state on that. And perhaps, it's a very difficult process. You almost have to fly up there and spend a week in a hotel and just pursue it in order to get it through in a timely fashion. So that's not as troubling to me as the fact that they do have it now. It's, it's a good thing. One of the things that I really like about that school is its location because it's at the Boys and Girls Center, which allows them to have that extended day. And they can do homework labs or whatever they need to do after school to enhance the learning process that occurs there. I had a question immediately about the question that was presented in the report about the fact that some of the data were inaccurate in terms of the attendance. And I asked the question of the staff at the time whether or not the accusation was that there was some attempt to fraud, fraudulently say that students weren't there, but then the changes were made. And then later I learned that the meals were eaten, so that obviously it indicated that someone was there eating and maybe they came late or whatever. And so the attendance process was a problem rather than an attempt to, to distort the data. So that piece of it, you know, just left a question in my mind about why we're just not getting data that I'm necessarily in support of. And as far as the test data, I, I don't understand why we can't have a coming together to understand how some are counting, some students this way and others aren't counting them and so forth, and what's the uniform process in terms of, of what's going forward. I have spoken to at least one of my colleagues who has stated that the test data are poor. I'm not ready to say that yet because I would like to see the data defined a little differently to be sure they're accurate in the way that they're being presented in terms of the test. And then the comment was made about NUBIA, that we kept delaying closing them and delaying that, that closure. And I don't really, I wasn't here with NUBIA and can't speak to that, but I'm speaking towards this school and saying that we've already given them a year over into their next time, that maybe we need to look at how we can work with them to figure out what's going on.
Any other questions or comments?
And this is, this is a really difficult situation because I know that everybody really cares a lot about the school. And yet I'm also looking at the issue that the reason that there was not sufficient grounds to, the last time the renewal came up, there were not sufficient grounds to renew the, the charter at that point. So I think the board really did bend over backwards and say, okay, if we, if all of these conditions are met, then they can continue. And if not, there would be an agreement that they would voluntarily surrender. But I, but that doesn't take away from the fact, I mean, I have visited the school, I met the principal, I've seen the students, and I know that they're, they're, you know, certainly been making valiant efforts, and I'm sure they've helped many kids. But we also have to hold to certain standards in terms of what the performance that we want for our students. And I think it's of note that even, even the Charter School Association is not here tonight to, to speak in terms of this. The only thing that I would hope is that with, with the closure of the school, that as a district, that we make a really concerted effort to make sure that on an individual basis for every single student, that, that they are properly placed in the school that will best meet their needs, whether that's the neighborhood school, whether it's, it's through the, through the choice program or whatever, that there would be an individualized, not just a mass thing, but a very individualized approach to make sure. I mean, we've certainly seen, you know, we have comparisons to the other neighborhood schools, the other schools throughout the district, but I think this needs to be handled very delicately.
Others? Yeah? Trustee Barrera?
Again, I absolutely respect everybody who's here in support of the school tonight and the community that's been created around the school. And I respect Dr. Payne's support for trying to work with the school. The responsibility of a school board, of this school board, in terms of our relationship with charter schools whose petitions we approve, is a difficult one. And I hear, you know, the comment that, why can't we simply work with the school to make improvements? And it's a reasonable expectation. However, that's not our authority. When a school, when a community decides to form a school, to form a charter school, by definition, that community has the independence from the authority of a school district to manage the school the way that you believe it needs to be managed. We don't have the authority to, for instance, put a principal, to, to, to work to remove a principal if we believe that there was an issue there in terms of the leadership of the school. We don't have the authority to come in and offer the kind of support that we would provide to a school that's in fact run by the district. Our only authority is to decide whether or not upfront to grant a petition and then upon renewal, to decide whether to grant the renewal. And our responsibility in making that decision is to look at some very basic issues of accountability. Is the school managing its finances well? Is the school meeting a minimum level of academic performance so that its students are being properly educated? Is the school being transparent in the way that it reports its data? a principal if we believe that there was an issue there in terms of the leadership of the school. We don't have the authority to come in and offer the kind of support that we would provide to a school that's in fact run by the district. Our only authority is to decide whether or not upfront to grant a petition and then upon renewal to decide whether to grant the renewal. And our responsibility in making that decision is to look at some very basic issues of accountability. Is the school managing its finances well? Is the school meeting a minimum level of academic performance so that its students are being properly educated? Is the school being transparent in the way that it reports its data? That's what we as a school board have the responsibility to oversee. And if we believe that there are certain things that we would do differently at the school, that's not our place to go in and, and work with the school in that way. It's, that's our job with schools that are run by the district, but that's not our job with schools that are independently run as, as charters. And so when this school came up for renewal, the analysis of our staff was that the school had significant issues that would, that could have merited our decision to simply not renew the petition at that time. And the decision of the Board was that we didn't want to deny the renewal, but we wanted to do what we could legally to work with the school, to ensure that certain concerns were met. And so we granted a renewal based on certain conditions and the school agreed to those conditions in order to receive a renewal from the district. And so the question for us tonight is simply, the findings that our staff made, do we accept those findings? And there are significant concerns that are raised in the district, in the, in the staff's report. And so if Susan Park could come forward, I'd just like to ask some questions about how those findings were arrived at. Because if we believe that those findings were arrived at in a reasonable and responsible way, I don't see how we can do anything other than accept the findings tonight, which would result in the school being closed. And we, people have talked about this sort of, as the attorney mentioned, the technical deadline around the IRS submission. I'm not as concerned about that as I am with several of the other findings. So my question first, finding number two, finding number three, finding number four are all related to the fact that the school did not report scores for students who were enrolled in the relevant grades. How did we come to that finding?
Thank you. I wanted to first give background as to your question. One of the things that we did with regard to two, three, and four was to meet with the school in person, receive information. And it's important to point out that the criteria that you see on the left was developed by the school over a course of time, meetings, and the number actually went down as a result of let's set a goal that can be reached. And it was emphasized because we were specifically looking at the subgroups of the school, that this would be a school-wide metric and that's why you have the 80%. We wanted to acknowledge the demographics of the school, the needs of the students that were enrolled there. So what you have under number two, for example, has the 89.6. This, and I believe the Board has received several printouts from the testing protocols and, or testing manufacturer, and we couldn't find the 89.6 in any of the official reports. So our natural inclination would be to sit down with the school and to ask for the calculation. We have to date not received any data that supports the 89.6. So we don't stop at asking the school. We would consult internally with our Director of Assessment, along with our Director of Assessment Reporting. And then we would try to understand, could we create 89.6 with what was provided to us? What we looked at was enrollment. And so school-wide, 80% of school-wide, we wanted to essentially weigh everything in favor of the school. So we consulted with pupil accounting. And every month, if a student exited ARL in these grade levels, we didn't consider them to be part of the 100%. And so we recognized that some of our schools serve students who leave, and so our number was actually lower than the school's number. And we still could not derive 89.6. So we again asked the school, we shared this information and asked, can you help us? We can't get there. So the same analysis was used, the same internal experts were consulted with regard to number three and four. We could not create an 89.2. We looked at enrollment, we, not deleted, but we made our number smaller anytime a student left ARL, and we could not get 80%, meaning 89.2. So again, we asked the school. What concerned us the most with regard to attendance, an example might be, for example, number four. So when you, when we see here that it's 24 students, that is the lowest number for that year. That is actually higher than what ARL reported to us. So again, everything was weighed in favor with respect to data. The data was also shared with the California Schools Association to see if they could come up with 89.6 or 89.2. With regard to, attendance came up not only in two, three, and four, but number seven, it was mentioned that there was meal data with regard, in addition, attendance data. These are all self-reported by the school. And so we would expect to see if a student was absent, they would eat a meal, and if they were absent, they would not eat a meal. And we would expect a small percentage of data error, data entry error. But the excessiveness of those errors far exceeded a typical operation of a school. So our first question would be asking the school to help us understand why there were these discrepancies. We have not received a response, we have not received documents, and we have not been able to interview any of the teachers or the principal with regard to these discrepancies. So that's part of the analysis that the staff did.
Why, why were you not able to interview anybody? Were they not available or?
We just received no response as to that request.
Okay.
Okay. Based on the data that we could construct, do you know what the percentage was in terms of, you know, the numbers two and three, for instance, reporting 89.6 and 89.2?
We were nowhere near 80%. So we would be happy to have been offered a calculation, a formula, to see 89.6% and meet in the middle about students being attending. But we never received a formula, and none of the STAR official reports submitted by the school could support that number.
And, and finding five, first finding is that
Yes.
The school submitted data showing 20 test scores for grade six, however, the enrollment was only 11?
Yes. So again, we tried to take the percentage given to us, and then we would look at, we consulted with pupil accounting, and then we asked the school. At some point in time in the school year, ARL had 12 sixth graders, but there was no moment in time that we could find 20. So we did ask the school, we did receive a response that there was a combination class, and so there was a fifth, sixth combination class. That would, that would impact the teacher assignment, CalPads reporting, but it would not affect what grade they were with respect to their testing profile.
So, you know, the concern would be that if we have in two, three, and four, that we believe, based on the data that we can construct, even being conservative, that there are more students in a grade than the school is reporting testing for.
Correct.
The obvious concern is that the school is selectively reporting testing. In other words, that the school could, could it be reporting testing on the students who are doing well, but not reporting testing on students who are not doing well?
Correct. The combination of these, lack of students being, who are enrolled but not reflected in the totals, combined with the attendance changes, were areas of concern that we do think could have been clarified if the school provided data to explain the numbers. Since there was, there was follow-up documentation, but none of them calculated the 89.6. That was the issue. There was follow-up documentation, but none of them clarified why fifth graders of that number were reduced. We did get broad statements that there are students with, who would be in the special education subgroup or were absent that day. And so we considered that. We considered with respect to, that this was a school-wide metric and the subgroups enrolled there. That's why you see an 80% school-wide that the school wrote. These were tests selected by the school, and the 80% metric was identified by the school and lowered as part of our discussions and ultimately approved by the ARL Board in an open public meeting.
And then with number seven, the concern there would be that, as, as you said, Susan, that the, the number of changes that we saw.
Yes. So this, the school has grown. And it's, it has grown from 38 students to just under 200. And so we consulted with principals in the elementary school levels, pupil accounting as well. And our, we know that pupil attendance is not an exact science
Yeah.
And that absent students might become unexcused to verify. What you would not see is a student who had been absent for five consecutive days in November to be corrected to be attending in March. It was, it was the number of entries for a small group of students being marked present to absent, which is actually contrary to the fact that they would be absent with respect to testing. So then we compared that to the food data, which is self-reported by the school, and it was inconsistent to those absent students because they ate or they didn't eat, which contradicted the ultimate correction. What's also troubling is that 422 changes were made in March for attendance dating all the way back to November. And so we would expect to see a lag time for a student bringing a note or, but four months and all grade levels expect, except for kindergarten. So this would mean that first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, there was the same issue of reporting or inaccurate reporting for four months. So that was the concern.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Somewhat related to that, the school has responded to some of the concerns and, and have you taken a look at that?
Yes.
And what is your conclusion there?
All of the documents presented to our Board at various Board meetings, as well as documents emailed through the school or through their attorneys or through, through litigation, have been considered by the Charter Office. And where they involved an area of expertise, that department was consulted as well. We have reached out to the school to request in-person interviews with their counsel present, as well as additional documentation. We did get additional STAR testing information, but none that would correct the concerns identified here. We did not receive at this point in time any attendance supplemental information.
Somewhat related to that, the presenter suggested that we delay the decision. And what, what would happen? What's, what is, is there value in delay on this section?
I would defer to general counsel. I would emphasize to our Board that this decision was already delayed per the school's request when they requested their renewal. They, we started meeting with them in the fall of 2015. They requested to delay our Board's action to renew in part because of the Secretary of State situation, and we agreed, I believe we delayed ultimately over 100 days. It's also important to emphasize that the Secretary of State filing, while technical, the suspension is different than inactive. This was not a failure to process by the state agency. This was a suspension as represented by the school to have been resulting from a failure to submit income taxes on behalf of the school during certain years. So it's not something that was happened to the school, it's something that was caused by the school to not filing something.
Yeah, thank you, President McQuarrie. Just a couple of points, and, and I think this is really important, that, you know, as I explore the findings as presented and listen to my colleagues, you know, I think there's no doubt that, that we want to make sure that we're doing our fiduciary and academic responsibilities as directed by the State of California, which is the oversight of charter schools such as this one. And I remember last year where we were looking at the findings and there were some concerns by staff along these lines, and we decided to give the charter school another year to try to address some of these issues because we wanted to work with those, the educators at the school. We wanted to allow the parents the opportunity to continue at that school, and we wanted to make sure those children are given another opportunity. And I, I remember that we said, you know, and the charter school accepted the proposal that they would have one more year to try to address these issues and concerns, and then at the end of that year, we would take another look. And if they were still falling short of those conditions, that they would voluntarily turn in the charter, and then the children would find other educational opportunities in their communities or wherever. And so that's why this, this is kind of unusual for us because normally, in the past, when we've done, gone down this path, the, the charter schools have made amends and addressed those concerns and have gone on to, to improve dramatically as a result. So I, I reached out to Miles Durfee, the Executive Director of the California State Charter School Organization for San Diego County. And he made it very clear that the Charter School Association of California has not come out in support of this school at this time because they've seen the same findings and challenges that the staff has, has found out. In terms of our fiduciary role, I think that address is addressed in finding number one, that we would not be doing our duty as over, in our oversight capacity if we did not accept these findings this evening. Especially on two, three, and four is so eloquently, I thought Vice President Trustee Richard Barrera had, was very thorough in trying to explore the findings to make a very concrete and solid, well-founded decision this evening. The, the one question that I do have about two, three, four, and I think you mentioned it, that these were assessments of the school?
Correct.
Made up? These weren't CAL, CAS, California State Testing?
Because of the testing hiatus from the state
Yeah.
We had that window.
Uh huh.
We knew that we would have smarter balance in this year.
Right.
And we considered those recently in our analysis. However, in this snapshot, a year ago, we sat with the school, the school's principal, as well as the school's Board President, and we said, we have as a district, while wanting to fulfill our authorizer responsibility, also wanted to make sure parents who choose schools have an opportunity to choose schools that will serve them academically. And so we sat with the school and asked the school to choose the metric, and also asked the school to choose the threshold. The threshold was originally higher, but because we, we wanted to have a school-wide discussion about progress, that number was lowered. But we, we, as a staff, we did emphasize the need to have a broad metric and not just one test score for one grade.
Right. We wanted multiple measures.
And you see multiple subject areas and different assessments.
Okay.
So that there are different components to looking at academic progress.
So if the student just doesn't do well on one test, then they can make up for that and demonstrate their levels of learning on other assessments.
Correct.
Okay, I understand. And then obviously, the, the question is to Superintendent Cinni Martin, you know, if the Board, you know, with, through our oversight responsibilities and duties, as difficult as they might be, you know, takes the action and receives staff recommendation tonight, do we have capacity in the neighborhood schools to make sure that these children are taken care of and have a good educational experience next year?
Yes, yes, we do. And I think Susan wanted to say.
We have been working, we have requested with the school through its leadership to begin this conversation ideally long time ago. It was rejected, and so we did essentially honor the remaining time. We did, because of our legal responsibility, notify the students with IEP, Special Education students, because they students, because they are currently being serviced through our SLPAD, so those parents have been notified officially. As you can see, not only from today's meeting and participation, the school community has been well aware for some time. And as part of our duties in our annual site visit, we have emphasized the district's desire to ensure students have a successful transition when we interview the, the ARL board members, the ARL teachers, as well as the ARL leadership. So, this has come up in multiple conversations, multiple written correspondence. And we have, as we have done in the past, offered the services of district services through the neighborhood schools office. And we have also welcomed not only our special ed families, but all of the students there to be able to be contacted by charter's family, charter schools if it was desired, but it was always at the school's green light, if you will, except special ed. With all of that said, we have looked at with our instructional facilities planning group, Roy McPhail, and considering the otherwise attended. And we have also been notified through IT that many students have already begun to enroll elsewhere, at charter schools, at district schools. But I do believe there is a timing component of wanting to complete the process.
So, in 1992, California passed a law to allow charters to be formed in California schools. That law established, was, and created, made it possible for within school districts to use public money to set up public charters. They were given more freedom, freedom to experiment, freedom to explore, freedom to try new innovative ideas in order to have an impact on student progress and academic gains and where students could be successful, as well as to give parents choice. So, that law established that additional freedom. Along with that additional freedom came additional accountability, additional oversight. That has been mentioned, the, the need, the role that the district to honor, that provide, authorized as a charter has the role to play. So, it's our role not to be involved and engaged in the charter. That's the charter's responsibility with the charter's board and their parents and community and their instructional leadership. We can only do so much within the law to provide the support and the guidance. What's important, so the, there is that time for accountability. And it seems to me that time for accountability and oversight happened a year ago and that efforts were made to, to bring about improvements. And as trustee Viser has mentioned, there is, there is this fiduciary responsibility of this board to make a decision based on what we can do within, within the law. And it's, we're making that decision tonight and we wanted to make sure that all areas were covered, a community had additional opportunity to provide input. These are very, very hard decisions. They are emotionally laden. People have, have a very strong interest in their, their children and in their school and this is not, this is, this is a difficult but an important step that we're taking tonight. Yes? Ladies first.
I appreciate everything all of you have said and even what she has said because I already knew all of that. I have the unusual experience of having actually developed a charter at one time. With the same kind of goal in mind that Evangeline has put their charter together, we decided not to open it, even though it was approved by the state of California, approved by San Diego City Schools in the year 2004. It was called Pride for Purpose, Respect, Integrity, Dignity, and Excellence, Pride Charter High School. So, I understand the law and how you form a charter, on and on and on. I understand what she's saying about the data and your efforts to reach out, but I'm not convinced tonight. And so, I, this, this will be my no decision tonight. And I don't know what you can say to change my mind, but that's where I am.
(APPLAUSE).
Just, yeah. I just wanted to thank Ms. Park and the Charter School Office because I know that
this is difficult and you've worked very hard on this. And we as a board have said, we don't want to, you know, go overboard in terms of doing all the work for the charter, but at the same time, we want to be fair and so forth. And the way that you were able to go through all these items, I think you came from the point of view of, we, we want them to succeed and we're trying, and if they have succeeded, we want to know that. And so, when you use the example of the, the 89.6%, which was above the number that they themselves established as far as the goal and asking, you know, can you show us how, how you've came up with this number and not being able to do it and then, and all the other things in terms of the attendance and so forth, I think you've been very open to that. So, I think, I just wanted to thank you and, and, you know, it, it helps us to really make a diligent, informed decision with all the work that you've put into this.
Any other comments, questions? We had a motion and a second to adopt staff findings and recommendation. Cast your vote. Vote is for one. Staff recommendations are approved.
I'll move item I-1 and I-27.
Okay, we have a public, as we moved in second and we have a public speaker for I-1. Citizen, I think?
Thank you.
Going once for item one, I-1, going twice. Okay? All right. Same for I-27, citizen, once, twice. She's left.
So, for that one too.
Cast your vote. It is unanimous? Oh, yeah. Now it's unanimous. Thank you. Are there any non-agenda public comments left? Okay, meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Good job. Oh, gosh. I don't like it. Eat out here.[1791.71]